Evening, everyone, friends, family, and supporters. I'd like to welcome you all to the Birmingham City Commission Regular Meeting of November 10th, 2025, here in the Municipal Building at 151 Martin Street. If you could please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Bingham, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Therese Long.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Baller.
Here.
Commissioner Emmerind.
Here.
Commissioner Hague.
Here.
Commissioner Host.
Here.
Commissioner Anthony Long.
Here.
Commissioner Schaefer is absent.
Is absent. All right, thank you. We move to proclamations, congratulatory resolutions, awards, appointments, resignations, confirmations, administrations of oath, introduction of guests, and announcements. We have one announcement this evening. The Clerk's Office would like to thank all the election inspectors and city staff who helped conduct a safe and successful November 4th election. We appreciate all of the voters who participated by voting early, absentee, or in person. Twenty-two point three percent of Birmingham's registered voters participated. Unofficial results are available at oakgov.com/elections under the November Elections tab. Official results will be available after the completion of the canvas of Oakland, of the Oakland County Board of Comic Writers. I would also like to, as would the rest of the Commissioners, and I'm sure the City Manager, thank Alex and her staff. The precinct captain at my precinct wanted me to understand that you and your team are rock stars and that you did an extraordinary job with the combining precincts and the new voter registration cards. So I think if we could have a little applause for Alex and the clerk's staff. You worked the extra Saturdays before, so you really put a lot of effort into making it a success, and we thank you. So we had an election, and we will shortly be seating two new Commissioners, and we have one re-elected incumbent. But we want to, at this point in time, recognize the outgoing city Commissioners who are stepping down tonight. The first Commissioner is Commissioner Katie Schaefer, who is unable to be with us this evening. She has an obligation related to her medical practice. But this is officially her last meeting as a member of the Birmingham City Commission. She made brief remarks and accepted her plaque honoring her service at our last meeting, but nonetheless, I want to take a moment to acknowledge her service. Commissioner Schaefer served the city for eight years, serving on the Multimodal Transportation Board from 2017 to 2021, and then winning election to the Commission in 2021. On the Commission, she served as Mayor Pro Tem from 2023 to 2024. Commissioner Schaefer's service was distinguished by her passion for pedestrian safety and for ensuring that Birmingham was a wonderful environment for families and children. She was unfailingly optimistic, and she was a dedicated colleague, and she always believed in the ability of individuals to do good and to facilitate change that improve the quality of life for residents. So Commissioner Schaefer, we thank you. Also stepping down this evening is Commissioner Jason Emmerind. This is his last meeting as a member of the City Commission, and while we understand his decision to devote more time to his family, we shall truly miss his dedication and contributions. Commissioner Emmerind served the city for seven years, serving as an alternate on the Planning Board from 2018 to 2024, and then being appointed to the Commission in November of 2024. In his short tenure, Commissioner Emmerind brought his vast experience in civil engineering and community best practices to the Commission, and his contributions to our deliberations were always on point, well reasoned, and absent any superfluous words. So Commissioner Emmerind, we thank you, and we are delighted to present you with this plaque to commemorate your service to the city of Birmingham. Thank you. Now we are going to have the transition to the new Commission, and we will begin by the administration of oaths to returning incumbent Andrew Hague and new Commissioners Kevin Kozlowski and Bill Cole. And Alex will join you at the microphone.
I do soundly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of this state, and endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of affairs of Birmingham, free from partisan distinction or control, and to perform the duties of office of City Commission according to the best of my ability.
I do.
So can you guys sign?
All right, this way, gentlemen. Very good. Thank you.
All right, and you can find some seats if you'd like, or you can stay in the audience until we reorganize. Right now, we are going to have the administration of oath to the Library Board members. We have returning incumbent and current Chair Danielle Rumpel, Frank Pizzano, and new member Pam Graham.
I do soundly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of this state, and endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of affairs of Birmingham, free from partisan distinction or control, and to perform the duties of the office of Library Board according to the best of my ability.
I do.
And then come on over. Sign print, I'll fill in the rest. Sign print, I'll fill in the rest. Sign print, I'll fill in the rest.
And a round of applause for our Library Board members. And we thank all of you for your commitment to service, whether it's new or renewed. Now we have the organization of the City Commission. Each year after election, we reorganize, and the Commission chooses a new mayor and a new Mayor Pro Tem by a simple majority of the members. We begin with the election of the temporary Chair of the City Commission for the purposes of conducting the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem election. Commissioner Long.
I'd like to propose that you stand in as the temporary Chair, since you will not be seeking either mayor or Mayor Pro Tem.
That is absolutely true. So, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We now move to the election of the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem, and we have the acceptance of nominations for mayor from the city Commissioners. Commissioner Long.
I'd like to nominate Mayor Pro Tem, Clinton Baller, as mayor.
Do we have any other nominations for mayor? All right, all in favor of...
Excuse me, I would like to make a comment before you vote, please.
Certainly, Mr. Bloom.
Okay, thank you. The first nomination for Mayor Pro Tem was for current Mayor Long to be the temporary mayor, and there was a comment made by Mr. Long saying that the mayor would not be seeking a new position as mayor or Mayor Pro Tem. Now, I thought that all discussions like this are supposed to be in the open, but nothing was discussed, nothing was offered here publicly. This was done, obviously, behind closed doors, which is part of the problem with all these machinations that are going on. Mr. Baller, who was just nominated, is, if not the smartest person on this Commission, one of the smartest persons on the Commission. And we have a long tradition in Birmingham, which I believe is important to uphold, of having the Mayor Pro Tem step into the mayor's position, and that's something that I do As someone that campaigned for Mr. Baller and helped him get elected, I can personally attest that the only thing one can trust about Mr. Baller is that he is completely untrustworthy. I personally feel that the traits that he has exhibited and I have seen are indicative of B-complex personality disorders. I'm not saying not to vote for him, but when you vote for him, I want you all to understand what you're getting. We also have two other Commissioners here tonight that were the top vote-getters in each of their respective elections and are incumbents, and also have a right, based on Birmingham tradition, to be Mayor Pro Tem. I have not heard that they've been nominated. I wonder why that is. You all have taken an oath to serve on this Commission under nonpartisan control and distinction, and I would argue that excluding those other two gentlemen who have worked tirelessly to serve this community is a violation of that oath. And I'm reminded of the parable of the scorpion and the turtle that you may have heard, and I have been a victim of that scorpion. And again, I'm conflicted because I support the tradition of making the Mayor Pro Tem the mayor, but it's very upsetting to me to see where we are today and the choices that are before us, and I encourage you to all think long and hard and work publicly and collectively to make sure that when you leave here tonight, you feel that you've made the best decision for Birmingham. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bloom. I would note that, just as it's tradition generally for Mayor Pro Tem to move into mayor, it's also tradition that the acting mayor is mayor for a year and does not slide back down to the Mayor Pro Tem position. So I think it was an easy assumption for Commissioner Long to assume that I was not pursuing mayor for a second year or to slide backward into the Mayor Pro Tem slide.
And I will add, that's exactly 100% accurate.
All right, so we have a nomination on the floor for Commissioner Baller as mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, motion passes, thank you. We now have acceptance of nominations for the Mayor Pro Tem from city Commissioners. Mr. Cole.
I'd like to nominate Andrew Hague.
All right, we have a nomination for Andrew Hague, and I would like to nominate Anthony Long. He's always engaged and prepared for meetings, he has an excellent understanding of the role, and I think he would be well qualified for the spot. So we have a nomination for Andrew Hague, and we have a nomination for Anthony Long for Mayor Pro Tem. All in favor of Andrew Hague for Mayor Pro Tem? We have two. We have three. All in favor of Anthony Long for Mayor Pro Tem? We have four. So we have congratulations to Commissioner Baller as the new mayor and to Anthony Long as the new Mayor Pro Tem. And now, we have item E, outgoing presentation to the outgoing mayor, which is me. And so I would just like to state that it has been an honor to serve as mayor for our wonderful city for the last year. Our work on the Commission to improve the quality of life of our residents and to make Birmingham a community that serves all of us is the reason we're here. We want Birmingham to be a welcoming place for everyone who lives, works, and visits here. As mayor, it has been a privilege to meet many engaged residents, community leaders, and business owners who care about our city and who volunteer and give back to make our community better. The city is exceptionally well-run due to the hard work of our city manager, each member of our city staff, our police and fire departments, members of our appointed boards and committees, and the work of the Commission itself. In the last year, we have worked hard to continue our focus on infrastructure, investing in significant capital improvements for water, sewer, and roads in our neighborhoods. We are investing parking enterprise funds to improve our parking decks, to make them an appealing alternative to on-street parking. We continue to invest our parks bonds to improve our neighborhood and community parks, and West Lincoln Well Park and Pump House Park will both have new playgrounds before winter. Next year, Poppleton Park will receive a new, fully-inclusive playground, and we will begin work on adding new amenities, including a bathroom, to Boot Park. We continue to make public safety improvements, installing 131 security cameras in the past year, including in our parking decks, and receiving a successful audit from the Michigan Department of Great Lakes and Energy and Environment for the quality of our water system. We continue to work to address the adverse effects Woodward has on our city in hopes of reducing speed and noise and improving conditions for walkers and bikers. For our focus on sustainability, we have planted, completed the Birmingham Green Healthy Climate Plan, and we planted 463 trees this year. For our focus on community engagement, we have added new family-friendly community events and have developed city guides for new residents and new businesses. For our focus on our senior residents, we have completed the city's Aging in Place Action Plan, and we continue to work on the New Home for Next. These successes belong to all of us. We are all the Birmingham community, and when we come together, we can accomplish big things. I want to conclude my term by thanking our city manager, city attorney, city staff, our police and fire departments, the Commission, the members of our appointed boards and committees for their hard work. I also want to acknowledge the support of my husband, who's in the audience this evening, who has spent way too many evenings watching me mark up Commission packets to prepare for meetings, and I truly appreciate all of you.
We're a little out of order here.
Now we're going to have remarks by the new mayor.
I think the new mayor needs to take the oath.
All right, I'm sorry. We are... The new mayor does need to take the oath.
But as soon as I get back, I will present...
And the Mayor Pro Tem. My apologies.
I do soundly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of this state, and endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of affairs of Birmingham, free from partisan distinction or control, and to perform the duties of the office of mayor and Mayor Pro Tem according to the best of my ability.
Okay, so now it is my honor to present to Therese, her third gavel. She has really broken a lot of new ground. You can take it, so I can recognize it. Therese has been on the Commission now for six years, three of them as mayor and two as Mayor Pro Tem, and she's broken a lot of new ground for us, and it's really amazing. She's helped redefine not only what it means to be mayor, but in part how we choose to be. She has been an extraordinary leader, and we, you know, I don't know if you've noticed, we've made some changes. We've allowed mayors to serve more than one year, and they get better with age. And just watching Therese tonight should show you that she's really got it down, and I know all of us on the Commission appreciate what she's done for us, and we hope she finds something to do with her newfound time. So, round of applause. Oh, I will sit down and prepare, I mean, I need a drink of water.
Thank you.
I don't have much to say, no, because I do want to thank you, the Commissioners, for your support. I really am, if you can believe it, humbled and honored. I want to thank my wife, who can't be here, she's on a beach in Florida. Judy, I know you're watching, I think you're watching, thank you. I can check and see if you're watching. She is. She is. You know, I've been involved in Birmingham politics inside, outside, for 25 years now, right about 25 years on the button, and I'm very proud of the many accomplishments that we have made here in this town and how we have evolved, and I'm looking forward to many more. We have a very full agenda for the coming year, probably the coming years, and while the volume of work will be huge, many of you know that one of my top priorities is going to be to end the meetings earlier. So I hope that we can, together, we'll be talking about this more later on, I hope that together we can make midnight meetings a thing of the past, and I'll be asking for your ideas, everyone, Commissioners, staff, public, on how we can make that happen. So with that, and in the interest of moving along, I'm going to yield the floor to the Mayor Pro Tem.
Well, thank you. First of all, it's been an honor to be up here. It's an honor to serve this community that I've lived in for almost 30 years. It's been an honor to collaborate. We don't always agree, that's why there's seven of us, because you can very rarely get everybody to agree, and I think if you look back, there's a lot of votes that we have agreed upon, and I think that, at the end of the day, we make the right decision, even though not all of us may agree with that decision. As for mayor, outgoing mayor, Therese Long, I've been very impressed with how you've operated, how you've... how you've performed the role. You were the first mayor, a female mayor and Mayor Pro Tem duo with Katie Schaefer, Commissioner Schaefer. And I think that despite the fact that the meeting is run long, I think you have done a tremendous job in that role and kind of been a role model for a lot of us. So while I'm sorry to see you go as mayor, I'm happy you're going to be staying as part of the commission. As far as Mayor Pro Tem Baller, six years on the commission and counting. You always come with new ideas. You always question why we do something a certain way. That's something that I've always respected from you. I think that part of what we do up here is to think about doing things and how we do them and whether we can improve them. There's always room for improvement in every aspect of what we do, even though I think we do things here in Birmingham quite well. And I'm going to look forward to your leadership and maybe questioning more. I think we have a lot of things coming up with infrastructure and buildings and finding a home for next and making some tough choices. We have a wallet that we have money in to spend, but there's only so much in that wallet, and we have to make those decisions, sometimes hard decisions, as to what we do. And I'm looking forward to your leadership in that role. But I also want to commend you. 22% voter turnout, and I think you had probably one of the highest voter, number of votes in recent elections.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to working with the two new commissioners and forging forward. So our future looks bright. With that, I'll yield it back to you.
Okay, we're going to take a short intermission. How long are we going to take? 10, 15 minutes? Do we know?
You're the mayor. You tell us.
Let's take 20 minutes. 20 minutes. We'll reconvene roughly 10 o'clock. And there's cookies and ice cream and no ice cream.
No ice cream.
Coffee. Sure.
Agenda is nominations and appointments to several boards. First, we have an appointment of, I guess, myself to the retirement board. Do we need a formal nomination?
Yeah.
A nomination but not motion.
Okay. Would someone like to nominate me to the retirement board?
I'll nominate you, Mr. Mayor, to the retirement board.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll nominate you, Mayor Pro Tem Long, as a member of the retirement board also. All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Okay. We also need to appoint the mayor.
Nominate Clinton Baller, mayor, to the retiree health conf.
All those in favor?
Committee.
Yes.
Aye.
And I would like to be appointed myself to the Triangle District Carder Improvement Authority. May I have a nomination?
I'll nominate you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And I would like to appoint myself to delegate of SEMCOG. Can I get a nomination?
I'll nominate Mayor Baller to SEMCOG as delegate.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And finally, we need an alternate. I think that would be city manager.
It's generally been the city manager in the past.
Yeah. Can I get a nomination of the city manager as alternate?
I'll make a nomination for the city manager to SEMCOG as an alternate.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, we're going to move to open to the public for matters not on the agenda. If there's anyone in the room or online who would like to make a comment, please feel free to approach the microphone, state your name and address, and make your comments.
David Bloom at 556 Wallace. I recently read that the community house is going to be closing their physical location and that the building is either on the market or may have already been sold. I've heard a number--
Excuse me. I just want to interrupt. We have an item on the agenda. It's a communication regarding this matter. Is it appropriate for those comments to be made during our consideration of that communication? Or is it fair to allow them to continue now?
It's usually led by the mayor. There are times that we've held the comments until the time of the communication or allow a member of the public just to say it early on to get it over with. I guess it depends, Mr. Mayor, if you intend to read that communication and have some discussion about it or not. Usually, our communications--
Regardless, I will graciously allow Mr. Bloom to continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city was looking at spending potentially over $40 million plus interest on a new senior center, NEXT facility on Lincoln. And I think this building coming on the market presents an opportunity for this commission and the community to look at. We're either trying to get that building or engaging in some type of public-private partnership with whoever gets that building in exchange for maybe building it out a little bit without, as long as the neighbors are okay, to either add some senior housing units or add some space for NEXT or some community space or something that we can do with. It's a wonderful location. That facility has been a part of the community and basically a semi-public institution. And so trying to maintain some public use access for that facility at the kind of cost that, what I understand, is there, might be more beneficial for the community than just solely trying to do something with the facility earmarked for NEXT right now on Lincoln. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the call.
Hi. My name's Asher Todorowski. I live in Waterford, and I represent a group called CAFE, which stands for Community Action for Empowerment. And we've picked several communities to go around there to ask for an audience to consider passing or protecting sensitivity areas, like childcare areas, churches, to restrict immigration officers going there and tearing out parents right in front of a bunch of children. And I know Birmingham doesn't have this problem, but we thought Birmingham would be a good role model, and it would help other communities that they saw you were active. And it's kind of a preemptive move. But we're asking for an audience. I just learned that you have a city manager type system here, so I don't know if I'd be talking with the city manager here, but we do have Birmingham residents that are interested in this too. And you have about six we'd like to present our case and some suggestions.
So my suggestion would be that you do speak with the city manager and our chief of police, Scott Gruy, who just in the last couple of weeks addressed this issue in some detail, and you might be interested in seeing what he had to say. Can maybe you guys exchange information?
That's a good-- Who was the city manager?
So city manager Jenna Ecker. She's sitting right here at the table, right in front of me. And Chief Gruy was here earlier, I think, but he's--
Right there, right?
No.
Didn't you say?
No. She's the city manager.
I'm the city manager.
And then the chief of police, Chief Gruy, G-R-E-W-E. He may be downstairs in his office.
He's usually watching it downstairs.
Yeah. So you could stop.
Okay. Well, we've talked with Oakland County sheriffs, too. You know, this kind of thing where we'll do it, you know, with the governments or the police chief, and we decide whether this is good.
Well, police chief is part of government, so I thank you for your comments.
Thank you. I hope to hear from you.
I hope-- Well, I think it's up to you. I'm going to leave the ball in your court--
Okay. Paul.
--to Jenna or Scott. And if you go down the hall and go downstairs, he might be in his office right near the door.
Can I give you a card?
Absolutely.
All right. If there is anyone online who would like to make a comment, please use the raise your hand function. Otherwise, we will move on. I see none. Move on to the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and approved by a roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of the items unless a commissioner or a citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order business and considered under the last item of new business or sooner. Do any commissioners have any items they would like removed?
F. Foxtrot.
Any others? Anybody online or in the audience? Seeing none, can I get a motion on?
I'll make the motion if that's okay.
Yeah, please.
I'd like to make the motion-- I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written with the exception of item F.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Teresa Long.
Yes.
Commissioner Hay.
Yes.
Commissioner Cole.
Yes.
Commissioner Host.
Yes.
Commissioner Kozowski.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Anthony Long.
Yes.
Mayor Baller.
Yes. I assume we'll want to take up item F right now.
Mr. Hay? So this one, it's not actually questioning of the plans as written for the most part. There's questions around what the consequences and some of the missing information are because this is looking for permission to stage in a series of areas around the city. So things that I see that are missing from the plan, first of all, there's no timing here whatsoever. We have no concept of how long each stage takes. And there are stages here that are closing down city streets for an unknown period of I need to know how much time we are expecting to lose use of streets.
Okay. There is a timeframe that's built right into the contract. It says it's going to start in the fall of 2025 and finish in the spring of 2027, and that it all has to be wrapped up in any event by March 31st of 2027. To your point about the phases, there is not a specific breakdown because all of those things are dependent on many other factors, weather being one of them, MDOT and MDOT approvals being another.
Well, to finish going through the questions, which you're partway answering already. So, yeah, we're losing city streets, and it's a little-- I'm at the point of I'm tired of losing city streets for an unknown period of time. There's one down the road here that's been closed for almost three years, and I'm done with that. It's not interesting anymore. The point about the MDOT one, so I've got concerns about this because it shows a 540-foot taper going south on Woodward, reduced Woodward to three lanes. What I don't see in here is any consideration for all the businesses that are affected by that taper. So Walgreens has no entrance and exit plan in and out of that taper from their entrances on Woodward. Papa Joe's is affecting, as is the new outfitter store. There's nothing showing how their traffic gets in and out. So I don't see any consideration of impact of those businesses. That needs to be in here because we have-- We've had an instance recently where there was insufficient communication that was resolved, but there was insufficient communication with affected businesses with street closures. This is exactly the same thing, except it's now multiple businesses, and I just-- I don't see it. Also, I've got concerns with the truck traffic moving in and out.
Commissioner Hay, the city manager did want to respond to your initial comment, so she may have an answer for you.
Yes. For, first of all, the lane-- the actual lane closure is only going to be up in the vicinity of that plaza area where Elm, Haynes, and Woodward kind of meet. But you're right, MDOT requires, I think it's 450 or 550-foot taper--
Correct.
--so that the lane closes and gives everybody time. That's a requirement of MDOT if there has to be a closure. So we can't change that amount. There is going to be openings for each of the businesses as part of the MDOT permitting process. They're the ones who decide where those openings will be, and they will-- there will be an opening to Walgreens. There will be two openings to Papa Joe's, one at the south end of that MDOT-- you know, the pull-off area where the parking is, and one at the north end. So the access to the businesses will be maintained, and it'll be part of the MDOT permit.
We get to see that because we're effectively being asked to approve something without being able to see what impact something has on the state road to businesses that we are responsible for looking help for their interests. And so that's where I see a disconnect.
Yeah. Eventually, we'll be able to see it, but we don't have any control over it, and they will be-- But I will tell you that their access management and keeping access to all businesses open is always a priority of theirs.
Okay. Other points are the pedestrian detour. It's a little excessive. It sort of is what it is, but it's a little excessive. But in some of the other plans, it appears as though the pedestrian detour ends up not being a detour when I go to things like exhibit E. Unfortunately, the numbering got mixed up on the package. But exhibit E, where we show the entrance-exit area, there's no color coding key for what the colors are. On exhibit E, we have a blue zone that leaves it rather open to interpretation for the pedestrians that can walk down Haynes Street on the south side, that they can then walk straight across the construct--
Okay. They will not be able to walk through the construction zone.
No, no. The construction entrance in front of it, because that's not the controlled area. You can't gate that piece off because it actually leads straight onto Woodward at that point. That's where I've got concerns about physical-- if you can see it, you'll do it. Instead of walking a third to a quarter to a third of a mile all the way around the entire block, if I can walk 15 feet, I'll walk 15 feet. So they've just got concerns about this.
Now, we don't want people to do that. You can't stop them from doing it, but we are required under the federal law to have an ADA-compliant pedestrian detour, which is what we have, and we can't take it across private property. But to your point, we don't want anybody walking out into Woodward.
I see risks. I just want to make sure that we illustrate them, and I need this contractor to be paying extra careful attention because this is closing everything off up to the street side. It's not even allowing space. So I have-- I just have issues about how this is laid out right now that-- That there's a lot of work, there's no timing. I wish to see timing with every future plan. It's going to be, I'm going to pull every single one I remember because if I don't see timing, I'm going to question it. Their project manager has a, I guarantee you, unless they're incompetent.
No, they have a time, they have a timeframe, but it's.
So I'd just like to see blocks. Do they expect to have Haynes closed for the entire two years? Or is it one year, et cetera? Things like that. Now Elm, different story because that's going to get reconstructed as part of the deal anyway. That's fine, we get that. The other thing, and these are not metered parking spaces, so there's not a cost impact, but I believe we lose, I think I counted 21 parking spots, something like that with these closures. It's not downtown, it's not metered, but is there a containment plan for where those cars would otherwise go? Because I know, I actually, whenever I go to the T-Mobile store, I park on Elm. So I know I can't do that. Just one personal example. Just looking for what that containment plan would be. Because right now it's just a case of it's closed, find somewhere else. Good luck, everybody.
Well, we have looked into it and basically you don't, we don't see very much usage of those spots. And if you look at the staging plan for stage one, stage two, stage three, the phases you were talking about, in stage one, only the north side of Haynes has the spaces blocked off. In stage two, there's none blocked off. And then in stage three, the whole street is basically closed. So where could people park? There's an abundance of parking in that area. They'd probably go into the Walgreens parking lot, quite honestly.
My experience is the people that park along that street are the employees to the dealership.
A Porsche.
And they're not going to be there.
And a lot of times.
They're going to be over at the other location.
They're like two doors north because I think they're moving everything a couple of doors north. That's what, that's what the sign says.
They're moving, although while they move to Audi and then they, they're moving to, to the, to the big, to the big shopping mall. But I think the cars that normally park along there, I'm not saying everyone obviously, but the majority of them are employees of the dealership. So.
Yeah, and a lot of times they have their vehicles for sale that are parked in a lot of the spaces in the parking lot. So then even somebody visiting could pull up there because they see that the lot was full of Porsches.
Commissioner Host.
I have three questions for the city manager. What are we charging on Haynes, the closure of Haynes? And when is the deal up for renewal again? I think we're in our third year.
Are you talking about on the other side?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, that's not part of.
What are we charging?
That is not part of this discussion right now.
It will be after my third question.
Okay, well, let's, maybe you should ask your third question first and then.
Okay, my third question is why aren't these people paying for use of our roads?
We don't generally charge people for the use of the road. We do, what the benefit that we get in return is we do charge them if there's paid metered parking spaces, which as you've noted, Commissioner, there are, we don't charge for parking over there. And then we often ask them to reconstruct the road or build in new.
That goes without saying.
They're not, they're not paying anything for Haynes other than the reconstruction that they'll do after the project.
But Doraid Marcus is paying us for Haynes. Not at all?
He's only paying us for any of the, no, he's not even paying for the parking spaces. No, he's not.
Okay, same for the new Maple project, the post office? Or are we charging?
We are not.
Holy crap.
Okay.
Well, there have been, I would say there are benefits to the city of development and these are all interesting points. We have in front of us a request from the city to approve this agreement. And if, I mean, it's pretty binary. You're either in favor of it or against it. A lot of the questions we have are good questions. I'm not sure they're appropriate to be asked from the commission table. Maybe a lot of these questions could have been asked in advance of the city manager, of the mayor, and we would have gotten your answers to those questions. Right now, we just need to either approve or deny this contract. Does that make sense? And I, you know, I mean, this is part of, I hope everybody sort of gets in their head what, what's going on right now over this contract and the time it's taking. And if we want to reduce the, the time we spend here, one way to do it is to get our answers, get our questions answered in advance so that when you come in, you can, you can vote on the measure. And, and I mean, this is a pretty routine thing. Do I think more can be done and that we, that these are, these are absolutely legitimate questions? Are we going to stop it? Do you want to make a motion to deny this? We could all vote on that and deny it until they satisfy, you know, do a better job, let's say. I think that's what you want. You want them to do a better job. You want everybody to do a better job. We all want, now I'm going on. I think we can, you know, we can do this in a different way, offline in many cases because you have your questions. They're not my questions or anyone else's. So. But let's get through it. Commissioner Long.
I would just note that the, the plan that's in front of us, the designs, the reconstruction of Elm is the product of years of negotiation between former city manager Tom Marcus and Mr. Lavery. And the fact that we are benefiting from the reconstruction of Elm and that intersection at the end, to me, has value beyond charging for the parking spaces and the use of the road. So I, I think that is going to be in total a benefit to the city and I intend to support the motion when it's raised.
Commissioner Kay.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you know, a huge amount of time and effort has been put into these plans. And I had kind of chalked it up perhaps to an experience that I was having trouble deciphering some of these things. So, so one of the questions that I wanted to, because I, to piggyback off of what Commissioner Hague said, I am concerned about the pedestrian experience on Woodward as well. You know, distances between crossings on Woodward are extremely long. Trying to shortcut your way on the far right lane of Woodward is extremely dangerous. And when I looked at it, the, the implication to me was stage one and stage two have explicit, these like orange dotted arrow paths suggesting a pedestrian detour. Stage three does not. And, and just judging by what I saw in the picture, I thought, oh, well, maybe that means the sidewalk on Elm will be open and people will effectively be able to navigate Woodward on the east side on foot. But if you look at any of the diagrams with the colors on them, it looks like depending on what exactly the pink zone is, that may or may not be the case. So I was wondering if there were any, was any clarification there? Do we have any expectation that during the 18-month or whatever construction period, you will ever be able to cross north-south as a pedestrian on Woodward?
Yes, you will. There will only be a time, there will be a shortened timeframe where they'll be working on what I call the plaza area where Elm, Haynes and Woodward all come in at those funny angles.
Yeah, and they're doing a reconstruction there.
And reconstructing the road. That will, it will only be closed while they do the work on that area. The only reason we have to close any part of Woodward is because of the work in that little triangle.
Okay, and then basically the fences will come in around the actual lot where they're doing the construction and pedestrian traffic will be able to continue on the sidewalk there. Excellent, thank you.
Commissioner Host.
I think henceforth, based on my three questions and all, the answers are no. We should have something in place for the next construction that takes up some of our airspace or some of our easements that we charge for the usage of those.
I think that would be appropriate to bring that up under new items.
Then we'll bring it up later on the new items. So to circle back around since I pulled it, the observation from Commissioner Long, as I started my whole question, I'm not questioning the plan, the structure, the, the point about Elm, you're right, it's been under, it was in the 240 plan. So I mean, it's, that's nothing new. That's fine. What I was concerned about were closures and accessibility and what the implications were for. No, it does work. Everybody tells me to talk into it and then it doesn't, it doesn't seem to work very well. So I'm trying to talk into it. I think everybody hears what my pain points are. I'd like to see timelines, even if they're approximate. To have no timeline is not really an acceptable answer. So I did actually want to deny it, quite frankly. I will go ahead with approving this, but I do want to see timelines brought to us, even if it's just under communications. It's appropriate for us to see what the expectations are from the contractor as well. I know Mr. Lavery clearly has a timeline he wants to work to for very obvious reasons. The public needs to see it as well.
My understanding was that a representative of Saksy Development was going to be on Zoom. I do not see them identified by name, but if you could perhaps ask if they want to.
Is there a representative of the contractor on Zoom?
If you could see the names on there, it would be Bill Verbeek.
No.
No, I don't see that. Or Beth Miccon or.
Nope.
Krista Amaliyo.
Nope.
There is a C, C Amaliyo.
C Amaliyo.
C Amaliyo.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Are you listening, C Amaliyo? Oops, she just, there she goes, raised hand. Ask to unmute.
All right.
Uh, go ahead. You deem to unmute?
Thank you.
Hi.
Thank you for having us.
Do we have a specific question for Ms. Millie?
I think Commissioner Hague was asking if you could give an estimate of your timeframes for each of the phases or stages, as you call them in here, stage one, stage two, stage three.
I don't know if we lost her.
I know, looks like we did.
No, I can hear you, thank you. With specific dates, we do have some construction activities that are moving around. If that is something I can follow up with, I'd feel more comfortable giving you those dates and durations, knowing a couple more variables that are going on with the actual construction of the building. So is there a timeframe, even if it's tomorrow or by the end of the week? And I can get those.
Next meeting communication would be, would be sufficient for me.
I think by the end of the week would just be fine. Okay, so do we have a motion on this?
Yeah, our motion to approve is written with the noted, with the noted update.
I'll second.
Let's do a roll call.
Commissioner Hague.
Yes.
Commissioner Cold.
No.
Commissioner Host.
Yes.
Commissioner Kozowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Therese Long.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Anthony Long.
Yes.
Mayor Ballard.
Thank you. Moving along, we have. Sorry, I'm going paperless, but then going back to paper. Okay, we have no city managers report. We have no unfinished business, so we're moving to new business. A, a resolution approving the settlement agreement between the city and the Birmingham Police Officers Association for renewal of the collective bargaining agreement. Hello.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and Commission members. I am before you regarding the settlement agreement and contract renewal with the Birmingham Police Officers Association. BPOA represents 36 full-time police officers, sergeants and dispatch employees working within the police department. The current collective bargaining agreement with BPOA expired on June 30th of 2025. And on November 3rd of 2025, a settlement agreement was reached between the city and BPOA. The primary features of the settlement agreement are a three-year contract, annual wage adjustments of three and a half percent for 2025, four percent for 2026 and three and a half percent for 2027, five percent wage increase for the dispatch positions, five percent employee contribution matched to a 401A, sergeant officer in charge pay, $150 increase in annual uniform allowance, six shifts of paid military leave time for military members. We have a $25 increase in holiday premium pay, the addition of Juneteenth for the purpose of annual vacation accrual and language adjustments for compliance with the Earned Sick Time Act. All of these will have a fiscal impact of $275,000 for this year, which is budgeted in the wage adjustment account. That does include wage-infringed benefits. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Have a question.
Any questions from the commission? Commissioner Hague.
Christina, could you just tell me again the date of that agreement, please?
The date of the.
You ran for it so quickly, I couldn't write it down. You said you had the date of the agreement with the police.
November 6th, 2020.
It was November the 6th.
That's what says the union membership.
It says membership approval date would be, but I don't see anything in writing that says the approval was actually approved. I just want to confirm what you said.
Yeah, so on November 3rd, the city and union, the union representatives agreed. And then on November 6th, the, the union voted.
Okay, so they ratified it after that. I just didn't see the confirmation ratification. Okay.
There's actually an email in the very last page of this item in the packet that says, that talks about the ratification.
Ah, that must be one of the ones that's missing from mine.
Anyone else? Anyone in the public have any comment?
I'm sorry.
No one on the public, nobody online? Motion?
I'll make a motion if you like. All right, make a motion adopting a resolution approving the settlement agreement dated November 3rd, 2025 between the city and Birmingham Police Officers Association for a renewal of the collective bargaining agreement through June 30th, 2028. Further to authorize the transfer of funds in the wage adjustment account 101 dot zero dash 272 dot zero 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 dash 709 dot zero 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 to the appropriate departments.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Cold.
Yes.
Commissioner Kozowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Therese Long.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Anthony Long.
Yes.
Mayor Ballard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hague.
Yes.
Commissioner Host.
Yes.
Next item is the initial bistro screening for 2025. And we have two, so we can move forward with one or both or neither. So is.
Snuck up on you. Are you ready?
Yep.
As you'll ever be, right? My name is Nick DeQuay, I'm the planning director of the city of Birmingham. And as you mentioned, it is the initial bistro screening step of the overall bistro process. Now, there's a lifecycle there that I'll explain a little bit. But the process that we've been following since we adopted the bistro, bistro concept, I mentioned here the early 2000s, it's more like the late 2000s, '08, '07-ish. Because in the second year, we would start this process where we permit up to two new establishments a year. And then should there be any, we could also permit up to two new existing establishments to transition to the bistro world for a total of up to four maximum a year. We've run pretty steady, although, you know, post-COVID, there's been a bit of a lull. And just to outline some of the recent ones we've seen in the commission, in the October cycle, we saw Marrow come, who have since decided not to. And in April, we saw the Amalfi Coast, which was in the, on the north side of Old Woodward. I would at least say that the space that they were planning to has been taken by somebody else. So I wouldn't expect them to come back. And then Quimosabe, which was also on North Old Woodward and right adjacent to the parking lot, which I've also seen nothing on since April. So I would not expect any of those recent initial bistro screening applicants that you've put forward to be coming in for a special land use permit anytime soon. I mention that because we do have two new applications for consideration. So it seems to me that they can be reviewed without, shall I say, worrying about the other three that we also recently moved forward. So as I outlined in my report, this first part of the process, which we start here in October, so they both gave me an application by October 1st. We asked for a little bit of information from them, a brief description of their concept. We want to know where they're going, their hours of operation, a little bit about ownership and also their financial ability to operate the bistro. Once they submit all that, we take them here for the initial bistro screening. Should you move to pursue either of them, they would then go to the planning board for a special land use permit, which they would receive a recommendation. And then to complete the lifecycle, they'd come back here for final approval. So at present, the city of Birmingham has 22 bistro establishments. Nineteen of them are in what's considered downtown, which stretches from all the way to the north into the south end. end. When the bistro concept was introduced, they were intended to be small, eclectic, unique little places to eat. We wanted less of the big, huge, bar-type restaurants, and more of the little, unique dining experiences that we thought would be a good addition to Birmingham. So importantly, bistro is defined in our ordinance, and I'll just read it verbatim, as a restaurant with full-service kitchen, with interior seating for no more than 65 people, and additional seating for outdoor dining of no more than 65 people. So with that being said, as I mentioned, we got two applicants, Tuda at 168 West Maple and Snap Taco at 126 South Old Woodward. As I've been doing the last few cycles, I've given you a little bit of an analysis, I'd consider it a 10,000-foot high-level analysis, of the proposal plus a little bit about their, I think this, what could be some pain points, maybe, I could say, in terms of the bistro ordinances. So Tuda itself has been open for 11 months now. Is that a hand I saw?
Justin, I need to get to Alex. This is dead. I've kicked out of the Zoom meeting, so you're not recording me at all, so I don't know if we're actually even being recorded anymore.
Yeah, and it's not based on your individual computer.
That one's dead as well, this one's dead. Mine's done.
So the Zoom component is still working, I'm taking the IT right now because my computer also froze.
Okay.
I can't even load Zoom.
Okay, so we're good on the public meeting side of things, so?
The public meeting side of things is still functioning.
Cool, thank you though, Andrew.
Is there anyone on the Commission who feels hobbled by the fact that their computer is down? Or can we continue? Is it okay to continue? Okay, go on, Nick.
Great, yes, yes, yes. So Tuda, it's been in operation since January. It opened up as, I'll say, a regular restaurant, no alcohol. It's currently got around 80 seats and no outdoor dining, and I think most of you were familiar with their attempts at outdoor dining earlier in the summer at the planning board, which have been abandoned at this point, while they sort of pivot to seek this bistro designation, if you will. They describe their cuisine as an eclectic American menu. They do focus on breakfast and lunch, so their hours sort of reflect that from 8 to 3. That's a little unusual, most of our bistros are actually more of a lunch/dinner side, if not only dinner side, so I do call that out as unique, although, one of the bistro establishments in that proximity is Toast, which has a similar morning-to-afternoon type feel, which is unique. There's also a few more bistro establishments next, close by, Brooklyn Pizza, Tlouva, Elyse's, Churchill's. As I mentioned, there's 19 downtown, so it's hard to locate a bistro without being around a bunch of different bistros. The zoning ordinance challenges that I call out here that I will also advise you, that I've been speaking with them at length about over the last few months, is it is unusual, a little unusual, for restaurants to go down in seats. I think they know that, they'd have to take it from 80-ish to 65. It's a maximum, there are no considerations for over 65 seats. It's also a bit of a tight area when it comes to outdoor dining. I would suggest to you that the ordinance requires up to 65, there is no minimum, so there are some simple solutions to it, and I think they could fit, if I may say, a couple of bistro tables out there and meet the minimum requirements. Is that necessarily what we're looking for? No, but I think that in terms of the ordinance, they could meet it while they explore the full breadth of their options in terms of outdoor dining. I encourage you to ask them more about it, should you invite them up for a conversation. And for Snap Taco, I am trying to avoid my bias in my love for tacos in describing this particular establishment, but it would also be considered new. It's taking over the former Koku Sushi Poke establishment on South Old Woodward, just south of Churchill's. They are also working on getting open as a regular restaurant, no liquor, currently building out right now, and maybe close. So they're operating another location in Lake Orion, they do describe their cuisine as Mexican, and it's got a very wide variety of dishes, the ones that you might expect. All the same bistros are close by, but I did add Casa Perdido Social to the east, are a little close to this one as well. This one is on the opposite side, they've really only got room for the 35 seats that they proposed already, there's not a lot of room for more seats in there, so I'm not concerned about indoor dining at all, but similarly to the other applicant, outdoor dining, space is tight in that area as well. I would argue that they could meet the minimum standard of the ordinance as well by just putting a couple of tables against the glass, but again, I think that's something we've worked closely with them on over the last four, six months, and I think they're willing to take the challenge. And again, I would encourage you to ask the applicant about that. So at this point, I do open it up to y'all, I have two suggested resolutions in here. You could either invite them up to tell you a little bit more about themselves, and then consider whether or not you'd like to move forward, or take action, or take no action, or do it once. So I'll kick it back to you, Mayor, while I?
Thank you. I think we ought to, Commissioner Host?
Can I ask Nick a question?
Absolutely.
The taco place, does it have a maximum of 35, whether it's inside or out? Just like you have said that.
Yeah.
Tuda is 65.
Yep.
Inside and out.
And I'll editorialize a little bit, there's a bistro establishment itself, no matter where you are, you cannot have more than 65. So I mentioned Tuda because it's a much bigger space, and they've got currently about 80, so they'll have to come down. The Snap Taco space is considerably smaller, so when I say they're probably about at their max capacity, it's about all you can fit in that space. So there's also other considerations that I frankly can't speak to, like occupancy from a building code perspective or a fire code perspective. So when I say 35, I just want to make sure you know it's clear that I'm talking about 35 seats in the facility, because sometimes when we talk occupancy, people get it confused with building code and bistro stuff.
Let's just, for example, if they had 35 at the seats, how many do you think that they're going to have out on the street?
And it depends on the solution that they come up with for outdoor dining, and pursue, and theoretically get approved through the planning board and city commission, but it could be up to 65. I'm suggesting to you that there's probably not room for 65 in that area, not on the sidewalk, but you know, there's platform options too. So that's just something we haven't worked through yet, but it's up to 65.
I would suggest having each petitioner come in front of us, we can ask them questions, they can add whatever they want. Let's start with Tuda? Tuda? T U D A?
T U D A.
T U D A? You can school us on the pronunciation.
Hello, my name is Philip, and she's Tuta, my wife, so the name is her name.
And the queen, I'm Jacqueline, I'm their daughter.
Princess?
Um, so, I mean, I don't know, do you guys have questions for us?
Well, we might, yeah. Do you have anything you would like to say to us first? Otherwise, we can just start peppering you with questions.
Well, if you guys want to, you know, we're family-owned and operated, I work there six days a week, my dad's there seven days a week, and my two brothers cook all the food, so he tried us out with them. And as far as the outdoor seating goes, because I know we had, came back here a couple months ago, we, as Nick said, we were thinking about, you know, the tables, how, we had spoke last time, or we did talk to Caruso as well, and they were okay with, like, working together. So we have, like, options, which we're going to submit paperwork for, of course, but there are options for the outdoor seating. And then as far as going down in seats, that's not a problem for us at all, like, we're totally okay with going from 80 to 65, because we just really want the license, because it doesn't, we don't go a day without somebody asking us for any type of liquor, and it's been affecting, even though it's been great, it's been affecting our business a lot. A lot of people call or come in for their reservations, and they'll leave once they find out that we don't have liquor, so we, we're really trying, we'll do anything, you know, like, seats don't matter to us, we'll go down, it's not a problem.
Anyone have any questions? Commissioner Hague?
So in the plan in our packet, it shows over 65 seats already on the inside. We have had, to put it politely, repeat issues with one of your proposed peers, who have consistently brought seats back in, year after year, and I've been caught out on it year after year, and when it comes to the liquor license renewal, it got heated last Not interested in doing that again. There's a really big lesson learned for everybody there. So I'm curious about that. Now, when you talk about the outdoor seating, so for both of these, both the applicants, I spent some time yesterday going and actually drive around and stand in front of both of your locations, because I wanted to actually feel what the streetscape looked like, rather than just look at Google Earth or Street View, I wanted to actually get a feel for it. In your particular case, there's an ADA parking spot in front of you. The sidewalk, I didn't go and measure it, there's got to be maybe eight, nine feet from storefront to the edge of the planter box. There's an ADA ramp next to the parking spot, and then there's a crossing on the other side of it. There's a deck that is one and a half parking spots from memory that's just down from you. I don't see where you can actually have street seating, because we're not going to take up a parking spot, an ADA parking spot, it's just not even on the table. So I'm not really seeing how it works, I can't figure out the geography of it that doesn't get in the way of street pedestrian traffic, handicap traffic, et cetera. So you mentioned talking with one of your neighbors, but that's quite some distance down the street. Walk me through your logic, because I'm really, really struggling with it.
From the door, it is a few feet from the door.
It's next door.
Next door.
Next door?
But you've got to look at the streetscape there, it's not the widest sidewalk. We do have a very constrained sidewalk with everything there, because when you go on either side, like I said, ADA parking with a ramp on the sidewalk, and on the other side, there's a crossing with a ramp, we have to maintain clearances. I'm struggling with how to actually put something on the sidewalk for seating. This is where I want to hear the plan. So I'm really looking for the, Nick, your hands up.
Next, guys.
Oh, sure, and I should have mentioned, because we've been working together for like eight months on this, you should also know, whether it affects your decision or not, with unique circumstances like this, often business owners have the opportunity to perhaps seek a variance because of the immense challenge there would be with providing outdoor dining here. So you should know that should you move them forward, they'll either find a way, they could pursue a variance, or some other option, option C that's unknown to us yet, but oftentimes people forget about that variance process. And again, it's not something that we necessarily love, but it's an opportunity that applicants have.
You're suggesting a variance to the zoning of a bistro? Okay, interesting. Anyone else? Commissioner Long?
I'd like to ask Mr. Dupuy, is there, given the clearances, I think we require five feet?
Correct.
Can you get even just two top tables right against the window and still have sidewalk clearance or not?
I would suggest to you that only on the right side, if you're looking at the storefront, only on the right side, but we do have to be careful about the handicap landing, just to make sure we don't infringe on that. But my answer right now, without having a measuring tape and being on-site, would be probably, because they've also got planters there too that take up about a foot, that you can go back onto their own property for about a foot, which helps.
Anyone else? I have a couple of observations. One is that we want you to succeed, okay? Beautiful restaurant, oceans of space, can't imagine taking 20 seats out, but, you know. And this is something that begs for creativity. Are you aware what Zana has done, and what Dick O'Dows has done by moving into their space to create outdoor spaces? I mean, that would be an ideal solution. We need creativity here, because we're squeezed outside the windows, and you have plenty of room inside the windows. I don't know if you've looked into that or not. The next step in this, if we allow them to move forward, would be for them to go to the planning board, correct? Where there is some creativity, there, when, typically when the planning board reviews a site plan, they're just looking for, looking to see if it complies with the ordinances. Is it legal? They're not. I mean, they can make some suggestions. When they review a bistro application, can you tell us whether they would work with them on some of these creative solutions to help make it happen, or would they simply say, look what you're proposing, it doesn't work?
In my opinion, that's probably one of the best things about our planning board in Birmingham, is we're more than willing to take the time and spend the time with applicants to try and find a creative way to term it. There may be an end result where we have to drop our hands and just accept that it don't work, but we're willing to put in the work to do so.
Okay. One other question, was there, I haven't been through the alley lately, but it's pretty tight there, is it not? Is there any opportunity in the alley? A la Dick O'Dows? No? Okay. I would be in favor of sending this to the planning board, that doesn't mean that we're, you know, jumping up and down and happy about it, but I think it's a, you know, they've got a significant investment, it's a beautiful restaurant, I'm happy to let them take the next step, but.
May I?
Sure.
I think that's an important point, and that is, I challenged you and the rest of the Commission to think outside the box. This is an establishment that is in the city, that we want to succeed, that it is very difficult to succeed without a liquor license, and they are in a challenged area as far as space, and I do not see a drawback to proceeding, I'm in favor of proceeding, to think, to let them think outside the box, to let the planning board do their job, which they do very well, and come back with a recommendation. Just by approving it tonight does not mean that they are approved, it means that they are approved and move forward, and to give them an opportunity to succeed.
Commissioner Kozlowski?
Yeah, so first off, thank you for coming and taking the time tonight. I agree with what everybody has said, that, you know, if we're going to make this work, it's going to require a lot of creativity. Sort of, one of the concerns I had was something that you had brought up, now I'm not a restaurateur and I don't know anything about your business, but is the goal here basically to be able to sell liquor? And if it is, you know, and we talked about, like, well, maybe we'll find some kind of bistro variance, I think I'm, what I'm, I guess I'm concerned about is the bistro ordinance just being sort of turned into a de facto liquor license, and that that's really what we're doing here, and the idea of having, well, a small place, under 65 seats, and then it's got a little bit of outdoor space, oh, and by the way, you can sell alcohol if you do this. Now it's like, well, we will bend whatever we need to, to be able to sell the alcohol. Not that I'm saying that's the wrong business decision, it's almost certainly the right business decision, but there exists some kind of legal framework for vending liquor licenses, and this was supposed to be something different, at least that was kind of my understanding. So I think that's kind of my concern here. So, you know, I think, would I be willing to see what creativity can yield? You know, perhaps, but I think it might be worth considering how the bistro ordinance is being used in the city, so.
Commissioner Host?
Yeah, was Commissioner Kozlowski correct that they're going to get a liquor license with this, if we okay a bistro?
If we, if we, if we okay this tonight, they will go to the planning board. The planning board will opine on it and send it back to us if they think they're worthy. At that point, we will either approve or deny their application for a bistro, not a license per se, they have to go out and purchase a license and have that license transferred into Birmingham. We don't actually grant the license, we grant them the, sort of the ability, under a special land use permit, to obtain a license and bring it here. And I think I heard, Commissioner Kozlowski, I think I heard them say that their customers are demanding this, and so, you know, and that's certainly understandable.
Absolutely, and it may be that I am, as I said, simply I was not familiar with exactly the process that was going on here, but, you know, my understanding is that it's possible to obtain a liquor license of some variety without being a bistro.
Absolutely.
Correct? But somehow, does being a bistro somehow make this easier?
It's more expensive, let's put it that way.
Well, ma'am?
Yes?
It's a complicated process. Basically, anybody can go out and get a liquor license, and they can try to use it in Birmingham, but we don't let them use it in Birmingham unless it's one of, A, one of the quota licenses that were established in the 70s, or B, they get approved as a bistro under this specific format, so our approval of a bistro allows them to use a liquor license, doesn't give them one. Right.
Thank you. Okay, that was my confusion then.
Beyond the Class C quota licenses. And then there's the economic development option, which is another option, that if they're spending X many millions of dollars, that we might allow them to use a liquor license. We don't issue them.
Okay, we do not issue them.
No, the state does.
But we have some kind of quota from the 70s that is largely exhausted?
For, yes, for the unrestricted Class C license.
For the full licenses.
And so the bistro license will permit establishments in excess of the 1970s quota?
Yes.
If they meet the criteria that we designed for what we were looking for in Birmingham. It will allow them to use a license if they can get one.
If they can get one.
Right, but if they get one, doesn't mean they can use it here, unless you all approve. the special land use and the bistro.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Row Temlo?
I just want to make a clarification and make sure that I understand. When Mr. Dupuy said, "Seek a variance," I think he was talking about the distance between the road and, say, the wall, and what distance you needed for pedestrians. I don't think he was suggesting a variance with regard to the bistro license, were you?
I would just, a bistro for outdoor dining generally. I don't think we would give variances for the distance that's ADA stuff.
So you're suggesting that there's a possibility to get a variance from the bistro criteria?
Yes, that essentially suggests that you must have outdoor dining.
You must have, so.
You have to.
Right, so the variance would be, no, you don't have to have tables outside, but we'll still give you the bistro.
Correct.
In this scenario that we...
Potentially.
I just wanted to make sure that we were clear.
If they couldn't fit anything and they've tried everything, and there's no way around it, they could always do that as a last resort.
Okay, okay, fair enough.
I want to make another observation that applies to both of these applicants, and that is, you know, for you, not the other one, you're right on the borderline between what a bistro and what a full Class C ought to be. You've got the square footage to support a Class C. You're going for a bistro because it's a lot cheaper, we know that. But I sense that both of you entered into your businesses without studying the bistro ordinance, without knowing that, you know, if you wanted to go ahead with a bistro ordinance, you'd need room for outdoor dining and that you could only have 65 seats inside. And so, you know, it's too late for you, but boy, all the other, we've seen this before, where they come to us and it's like, they're trying to fit a square hole and, a square peg into a round hole. So, anyway, do I have a motion perhaps?
No.
More comments? Go ahead. Commissioner Haig?
So we talked about Caruso next door, well, they're not next door anymore, they moved. October 25, Google Street View shows they're gone, so we don't know who's going in there.
They're coming back. They're just temporarily relocated while they repair water.
The old Moose Jaw place.
All right. The other thing that concerns me is if you do come back and start asking for parking spots, Dick O'Dowse uses one and a half. There's only six parking spots there, and that's already...
Well, they've already asked for that and been denied. Is that correct?
No, they asked for the ADA spot, which was denied, but if you go one over, which is in front of Caruso, that's not ADA. But that's one of six, and one and a half are already taken up. So now we would effectively take three parking spots out of the only six on that stretch that are available for public use, and they would be out of commission. And that's going to be a really big stretch because it would have to go even further over to a butt up to the Dick O'Dowse one and a half. So I've got a lot of concerns. I think your point about square pegs and round holes is really valid. And if we're at the point of, we decided to come up with, there is a bistro ordinance, but let's not bother with it because we'll write deviations for everything, then why did we bother coming up with the ordinance? Because then, to your observation, it's a restaurant. It's not a bistro. It's a restaurant with a different label on it, and it's just, deviation upon deviation eliminates the need for even having the requirement in the first place. There's no point in having the requirement. We did it for reasons, we did it for cause. So the other thing that I do remember was, I think it was in the first year I came here, Tom Marcus sat in front of everybody and said, "Just because we can doesn't mean we should. Two a year is the maximum. We can also do zero. Zero is a viable option." I think you've got a really nice looking restaurant. I don't think you have a really nice bistro. That's the problem. It doesn't meet the requirements. It's a really, really nice location, really, I mean, look at, look at the pictures, look at what you've put into it from your family. It's not a bistro. It can't meet the requirements. Geographically, there's no way of doing it. If we sit here and say, "You know what? You can take it down to the 60, 65 seats inside, and ideally, we want to have outdoor dining because that's the whole point of a bistro, but you can put maybe two two-tops out there if we're lucky, just with the sidewalk width, and you might not even get the second one in because of the access requirement from the ADA ramp." We negated the need for the requirement to have a bistro. I'm sorry, but I don't feel comfortable with it as a bistro. I think as a restaurant, you'd be phenomenal. You'd be absolute rock stars. But I don't think it's a bistro.
I don't know if this, sorry, I don't know if this...
Hold on, hold on, I'm sorry. Did you have something to add?
I just had a comment to that, but they're welcome to respond first.
Okay.
I was just going to say, as far as outdoor seating goes, we still want that as well either way, because that's another thing with competition, especially during the season, of course. I mean, if you looked across the street at Cafe Origins, they were packed nonstop, and people, again, they call in for reservations, they find out we don't have outdoor seating, they go somewhere else. So it's, it's not just the bistro license, but it's all, like, they go hand in hand for us personally. So even though we have a big space, it was things that we were thinking about ahead of time, but we were eager to open, so we kind of opened without the bistro license and thought, okay, we can work through things afterwards. And like you guys said, imagination, we have lots of it. So, I mean, we built a restaurant from being a clothing store. We, we can try things out, you know, we can try something.
You understand the parking issue that we have in Birmingham, though, right?
I do understand it.
Are there any new issues that we haven't discussed?
I just want to make sure that I understand that they could change the front facade of their, their restaurant, and they could make a patio within the confines of their space that is now indoors, and carve that in, and then come back. That's one option of thinking outside the box. They could do that, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, so, so why don't we, why don't we give them the opportunity for that? And I, I will say that I understand this is a big space, but so is Churchill's, so is Castor Pernoy, when you get the front and the back. Those are big spaces too, and those are bistros. So I would, I would caution not giving them the opportunity to go and think outside the box, work with the planning board, and have the planning board bring us something back again, before we tell them that they're confined.
Do we have any comments from the public? May I? Anybody in the public like to comment either?
I would.
Well, then, come to the microphone. State your name and address.
Hi.
And make your comments. We want to hear from you.
My name is Linda Kenny, and I live in the Willits, 111 Willits. And their restaurant, Tuta, is right behind us. It's a fantastic restaurant. I really feel that if they could get a bistro license, it would even be more fantastic. And I don't think they're doing it because they just want to be a bar. I think they want to make a better restaurant. And if they could figure out a way to possibly carve something in the front like they did at Dick O'Dowse, you know, it worked out beautifully there, and I don't know if they're willing to do it, but I feel like it's going to make that restaurant a great success, more than it is right now. The food is good. I don't think I've ever been in a restaurant that's cleaner than this restaurant, ever. The design is perfect, the bathroom is perfect, you never have a drop of water on the floor. It is perfect. So I understand about the bistro. I almost feel like having outdoor seating to make a bistro is a little bizarre, because I think, I think of a bistro as a casual outdoorsy restaurant with light fare and, and some alcohol. But it seems like taking the bistro away from them because they can't physically put two tables outside, doesn't make sense. I do, I understand with changing the, it makes no sense to have a bistro if you're not following the rules of the bistro. But I do feel like you should give them a try. That's all I can say. I feel they're good people, good family, good food, very clean. That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other comments in the room or online? Seeing none? Do we have a motion?
Can I make my comment?
Of course.
Thank you. So I just want to note that moving forward to the planning board is a significant investment in time and money, because what, the requirements that are required to go in front of the planning board, you would have to hire an architect, you have to have plans, it is a significant investment on your behalf. And so I just want to make sure that it seems, from the tone of the commission, that, given the width of the sidewalk, and the fact that we believe that the intent of the bistro ordinance was to create opportunities to activate the streetscape in town, and that is probably not a location that needs further activation. It is, it seems like extremely unlikely that this commission, even should you get past the planning board, would ever approve a solution where your outdoor dining is in a parking spot. And so the only solution that has been identified at this point is to reconstruct the front of your restaurant to do the Dick O'Dowse solution to build inside. And so you should be very clear about whether that's an expense you're willing to undertake should we move you forward, because I don't believe there's any support, given the geography, for eliminating, you know, the requirement for outdoor dining, because that is the basis of the bistro license, or for putting another parking platform, whether it's in front of yours or Caruso. That street is saturated, there's, the Origins Dick O'Dowse is already an unfortunate pain point that we hear about, and it may or may not be fair that somebody who was first to the table got it and you guys are second. But, so just you're very clear on that, that an outdoor dining platform in a parking space is likely not a solution for you, and so that, you know, it would have to be something that is going to frankly be expensive, and you'd have to decide whether it's worth it.
Thank you. Excellent. Motion?
Can we do them separately?
I guess we could, we, I think these folks would like to go home.
That's fine.
So yes, I would say if it's legal, let's do a motion.
I'd be happy to make a motion and send these good people home. I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution to move forward with the bistro application for Taduta? Help me with the pronunciation?
Tuta.
Tuta?
Yes.
Okay. And permit each bistro to, permit the bistro to submit an application for special land use permit, final site plan, and design review to the planning board for review and recommendation.
Any second? I'll second it. Can I second it?
You can.
I'll second it. Can we give Snap a chance to talk?
Well, they're going to come second.
Okay, that's why they're separated.
They're separated.
Okay. All right, is there any comment in the, from commissioners on the motion? Any comment from the public on the motion? Anyone online, use the raise your hand function? I see none. I think we can do this by a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Four to three, you've moved forward. Congratulations. Thank you. Do you have the correct vote tally? Okay, now, let's move on to discussing. Nick, do you feel like you've already covered the other restaurant? Or Snap Taco? Or do you have more to say to us about that one?
I wouldn't have more to say. I think it'd be more valuable to hear from them.
Okay, then let's get the Snap Taco people up here. Commissioner Host, yes?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Nick a question.
Sure.
Has the commission ever given a variance on a bistro?
That would be the BZA.
Right.
I don't believe so.
I don't think so.
Okay.
So do any commissioners have any questions for Snap Taco?
So my question may be for, Jana, for you, or you, Nick. That's the way I used to walk to work every morning, and when there was nothing there, you could end up in the street, anyway.
We're talking about where?
Snap, where Snap is going.
I don't follow you.
So that's the way I used to walk to work every single morning. Down, down Old Woodward to Maple, turn left on Maple and shoot down. The, with nothing currently there, it was shoulder to shoulder where you could get pushed into the road. People go in a Starbucks to get their morning coffee. It is bumper to bumper there.
On the sidewalk.
A sidewalk, on a pedestrian side.
Okay. So your concern is the outdoor dining?
Yeah. I just don't know where it goes without people, without risking injury to pedestrians.
Okay.
So, well, how about we do things slightly differently from where we started? Let them take, let them say something to it first.
I was going to say, let them address that and anything else you'd like to, and introduce yourself, please.
Good evening. My name is Mike Leeko. I'm from Birmingham, 2235 West Main, so I actually live here. This is Elson Rodriguez. We represent Snap Taco. We are a partnership, two families. We have the Rodriguez family, who currently own the Snap Taco in Lake Orion, which is a full-service Mexican restaurant, bar. They also own the El Dorado, which is in downtown Hubbard Hills, if you've been there. And they're actually opening a restaurant across the street from there, also a sports bar here in the next six months. So they have their, where, me, my wife, Robbie, we've had three restaurants up in Traverse City, so we moved down here. Actually, my day job is an engineer, so I'm full-time doing that, my wife will be, I'm doing the restaurant during the day, and I'll be helping out in the evening. We kind of work as a partnership, because one of the things we found out, it's very hard to get into this area, and since we live in Birmingham, we want something in this area. It was very hard to get into any type of leases without having a current restaurant on the books, because most places did not want you to come in. We've been working with Nick for, who, over a year, year and a half? So when you ask, "What was your plan? What did you look at for a bistro license?", we looked at different locations, north, north downtown. That fell through on us. We were able to find this location. It's in great locations, right next to Churchill's. Yes, it's in very high-traffic location, a lot of people are walking by. It is a smaller location, but with the setup we planned with our architects, we set up a plan that allowed us to open, hopefully here the next month, we are finishing up all the renovations. We've done extensive renovations for the last three months, all brand-new floors, all new tiling, all new ceilings, all new TVs, all new equipment, so pretty much the whole thing is brand-new when you walk in. We're just finishing up the health department requirements, this actually was last week. We'll get the equipment installed, we're going to work with the city, get our final permits from the mechanical and plumbing, and that should allow us to move forward with our opening, hopefully in the next month or so. That's kind of our time. We did think about this, and we did a lot of research on bistro license, or bistro permit, which I kind of like to call it, because there's a lot of confusion out there. What do you receive? So a lot of your questions that you were having today, I had also. And I talked to Nick, probably four meetings at least, to try to iron out, what do I need? It's a Class C from the state of Michigan, how do we, how do we, how do we get approved? What would be the best way to move forward? How can we plan ahead of time? So we worked with our architect to plan a way that we could open up here the next month as a full-service restaurant. We're going to prioritize all the lunch people that want to come in and out real quick, but that you can sit down and eat if you would like. We did talk about all the outdoor seating possibilities up front. We knew that up front, that our worst case was going to be probably two to four people at the most up front. We were hoping to use the platforms like they're using in other parts of the city, but there is none on Old Woodward in that area, there is no platforms in that whole block. It's been on the tear, I believe, before we get to another platform. So we were hoping, since there is no platforms in that area, it wasn't as big of an issue like you have on Maple. We also worked with our landlord when we first signed our lease, that that building is the same owner. So part of the rules of the city is that since it's the same owner, we could use a place next door, parking spots. Don't want to take up too many parking spots, we just want a couple so we can sit another 10, 15 people up front. Currently, we have around 35 people inside. We set up our bill this last three months, so that if we do get this approval, it would just be a quick change to add the bar inside, to add a couple, six more seats. I believe the maximum is eight for the bistro.
The bar is 10, yeah.
10. So we're planning about six to six, seven seats. We already got those designs completed, we figured it out, and as part of our package. So we did a lot of planning ahead of time to make sure that we had our worst case, which was two, best case maybe 15 or 16 out on a, on a deck. And if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Any questions from the commission? Commissioner Host?
You're not going to take up any parking spots, I'm asking.
Worst-case scenario, no, we would not. We'd only have the two seats in front. If we were able to get a slop for a deck to take up a couple of spots, then we would love to do that.
Yeah, but if you can't, you've only got room for a couple of tables.
Yeah, at the most, two, couple, two tops.
Commissioner Hague had his hand up. I'm sorry.
It's yours, Gosh.
Okay, Commissioner.
Oh, so, excited about the concept of your restaurant? I think it's great. You are an extraordinarily challenged physical location. Your building is only 16 feet wide, but at least seven feet of that is taken up by the two entrances, so you have, I don't know, Nick, I can't, whether that's five or eight feet across the front, where they could actually put-
I think it's eight, I think.
A table?
Plus or minus?
Yeah, so that's, that's-
One table.
One table with two seats, which again, does not perhaps meet the spirit of the bistro ordinance. It's also a part of town, which really doesn't require any activation from the, you know, for what the bistro ordinance was intended to do when it was developed. And personally, I would not support an outdoor dining platform on angled parking spaces that close to the intersection of Maple and Old Woodward. I think it is a dangerous location for a platform. And we are already challenged by delivery trucks on a regular basis, parking themselves in the center-turning lane to deliver things. And if you had a platform there adjacent to that, I'm not sure traffic could proceed. So, I think it is an absolutely inappropriate location for an outdoor dining platform because of its adjacency to a major intersection.
How do you really feel about it?
So, if I also may, it's gonna feel like piling it on, but I think she's really hit nail on the head really well. Concept? Sign me up, honestly. But, on the plan that we have in front of us, there are only 24 seats in there, there's not even over 30, there's 24 on this. Now, I sit and counting, I can get it slightly higher if along the wall, adjacent to the stairs for the second entrance, for the, for the upstairs. You can get one, two, three, four, five, six, maybe seven more seats in there.
So where you see the two tops, there's a bench there that goes along the whole wall. So there's 48, 16, 20, 24, 26.
So you're looking at back-to-back benches instead of two tops?
There's a bench, there's a bench against that whole stairwell. It's the whole booth, down the whole lane. Then we have high tops going in front of that, and then you have the chairs that you see sitting there. So you have there 48, 12, 22 seats.
All right.
So you got 30 seats without the bar.
So, you could get about 30 without the bar. With the bar, there's only five seats because of the width.
Here, we can wrap it around, because we actually, right here, you'll see there's a waitress station type pop that will go away when we go to the full-service bar, because we'll be going to more of a sit-down type of restaurant. So we were looking at possibly adding some of the two tops along the wall there, adjacent to the basement entrance.
You're being creative with space, and I really appreciate that.
There's other, there's other options, too. There is a full basement in this place, it's not part of our lease, right now. To add, to move the back fridge and freezer downstairs, and then allow us to move the kitchen back and give us more seating area. But we didn't go to that one right now, that's a plan B, because one, I didn't get approval from the health department to move the stuff down into the basement. Two, we were trying to make this change, once we go from what we were gonna open here next month to the bar, as short of a time as possible, and be open by next summer. That's why we were kind of doing this change here first. If we were able to do a plan B where we could do some other things, where we had those open and we were talking, actually, I'm meeting with the health department in probably about a week or two, to review some of those options with them, to see if it's even an option for them, because right now, I don't, I do not know. We talked a little about, about this when we, and before we signed our lease, we did come to talk to Nick in deep to make sure that we were okay with possibly moving forward.
What you've basically, because I haven't quite finished, what you've basically brought to us is, you're not ready. You're, you're ready for food, but you're not ready for the next step, because you've got ideas, but you haven't really explored them enough. Because as my colleague said, and I said right at the beginning, I went and sat in front of both locations, just to get a feel for it, and quite frankly, everything she said about the location, everything my colleague next to me said about being able to walk it in the morning to get to work, at lunchtime, what have you, you have zero options for outdoor seating. Why do I want to give out a bistro with zero outdoor dining? It doesn't even follow the intent. Now, yeah, maybe you can get a two-top. I can pencil-whip stuff, too, it doesn't mean it's worth it. You're an engineer, you know exactly what I'm talking about. I think you have a terrific dining concept, I'm looking forward to actually eating the food, because I'm kind of like Nick, you signed me up straight away. But I do not see the streetscape supporting this at all. It is not a safe place to be doing this, in my opinion. She's given reasons why. We have extremely challenged traffic up and down there with not just delivery trucks, but also Uber Eats and everyone else decide it's their right to park. I've seen them park in the roadway and run in, and just stop traffic. And it's just not on.
We have the back alley that they do come and utilize, I do, I did talk to the other restaurants that they come around the backside, along the backside or come through there. I guess one of my concerns or questions, I understand your concerns, of course, but as a person who drives West Maple every single day, because I drive from my house to Cummins every single day, back and forth, and I understand your concerns with the traffic and with platforms, but the current platforms that are in West Maple are right along Maple.
Did we sound happy?
Not saying, I know, I'm just trying to understand the expectations.
But also, you're looking at angled parking versus parallel parking, which changes the dynamics of how this works, because-
I agree.
So the sightlines for someone backing out adjacent to you, there is no sightline. And if there's a delivery truck parked there, there's no leeway for error. So we don't really have a lot of space. I'm afraid, it's harsh, and it feels like I'm piling it on, and I hate to do that, but I'm absolutely on board with my colleague over here, that I don't think this is right, and I, I cannot support putting a deck in a parking spot there, on top of the fact that this is, this is the most in-demand, Maple and Old Woodward in this area is the most in-demand parking we have. Colleague over there, Kozlowski, Mr. Kozlowski, he just came off the APC, the Advisory Parking Committee, he can probably tell you chapter and verse as to what we have for parking issues, because he's lived it for years. This is a really big deal. We hear all ends of earache from people about, there's no parking, we just left the city. We didn't even bother stopping to do our shopping. If we can't park there, we're gone, even though we've got decks with thousands of spots. But-
Commissioner Hague, I have a question for you.
I'm there.
I have a question for you. You're eager to eat the food, would you like to have a beer with it?
No, I don't drink alcohol.
Okay. Well, that's a good answer. I, I, I think you may be barking up a tree here. I do have a couple of questions for you. One is, what are the three restaurants you own in Traverse City?
Robbie's Tacos, Tici Mexicana, Robbie's Mexican, and Spanish Cuisine, so we're by the airport.
Okay.
That's served around 300 people.
Okay. There's an, look, there's an argument to be made, this is, I'm addressing my fellow commissioners here, that, you know, a bistro without outdoor dining might make sense in a case like this, if we felt that the concept, like, demanded a little cerveza with your tacos, right? But we don't have a law for that, unfortunately. Someone would either have to petition for it, or the commission would have to agree to direct staff to draft a new ordinance that would allow it. We don't have it right now. You're free to go out and get a Class C license from, are there any available in town, our quota, under-
I, I don't know the answer to that right now.
You'd have to contact an attorney who specializes in, you may already know. That's the way I see it. I don't see a legal way for, for them to do what we think probably ought to be done. I think most of us think outdoor dining's a non-starter here. Commissioner Long?
Platform, I'm not in favor of, not in that area, not with the angled parking, for the reasons that have already been mentioned. You mentioned that the landlord owns both your establishment, or the building anyway, and Farady?
Yes.
Have you talked to Farady?
A little bit, but again, that was for the platform reason. What the initial thought was that we would take just a couple of spots for the platform, but-
The only way, I mean, you don't have room in front of your, your place, you just, you just don't. It would, it would, it would be an impediment. The only way I see it is, is in front of their window, to fit two round tables and two chairs in front of their table, and, and, and put, you know, some type of fence around it like Churchill's has, just in that, in that one little area. It kind of clears the planter, so you've got the planter in front, which is also making it narrow as well. So you got a lot of, you got a lot of going, going against you. The only way I could possibly see it is, is if you put it in front of Farady, and I'm not so sure that they would want their storefront with their clothing-
To be obscured.
Obscured.
Yes.
So, I, I don't see it. I don't see it for tonight. I think that that's your only option, and I think that you would maybe need to come back, and I'm not even saying that that would fly, but that's the only, only thing I see. You're just in a very challenged location. It's not just the area, it's not just the surrounding area, it's, it's that, but it's also, I mean, that the storefront, you've got another entrance.
Two doors and a window.
Two doors, you've got two doors and a window, and I just don't see, I don't see it, to try and think outside the box and say, okay, let's take out, if you didn't have that other doorway there, again, go inward and put two tables, but that just, it's not gonna fit in that area, so I just, I just don't see it for tonight.
Only other option is make Churchill's your partner.
I've met them, they're very friendly.
Do rooftops qualify for outdoor dining?
They do.
They do.
We did, we did talk about-
Did you think about the rooftop?
I don't know if there's access to the rooftop, I mean, inside.
Just thinking outside the box here. I think we need to come to some conclusion on this, Kevin.
I'll, I'll try to keep it short.
Commissioner Kevin?
Yes. Yeah, first off, thank you again for, thank you for taking the time to come this evening. Yeah, I mean, I, I do tend to agree with, you know, about the dining acts and stuff, but I'm, I'm sort of, I feel like what I'm trying to get at is, you know, I was, I'm sure more confused than you were about some of the bistro license stuff, and just trying to figure out exactly what we are trying to achieve, why we are trying to achieve it, so that, you know, there's a lot of, of creative thinking going on, can you go up on the roof, can you move your windows in? And it feels like we're asking our businesses to tie themselves into knots, to figure out some way to qualify for this ordinance. Like, if we told you, like, well, if you can squeeze a couple of high tops out there, that's fine, like, would you take that deal?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so that's why, like, I feel like maybe this is, and I kind of wish the Taduta people were here to hear this, is this an us problem? Like, is this our ordinance is being too strict, and we're trying to find all these clever ways to subvert our own ordinance here? Or, is, is the ordinance, we like it the way that it is, and we should enforce it relatively rigorously, in which case we'd say, well, two high tops is not in the spirit of the ordinance, and we're not gonna do it. Right? I feel like, that's, that's kind of the question that is bubbling in my mind, is what exactly are we trying to achieve here? You know, do we want people to just be able to get a beer with their taco? Maybe we do, in which case maybe we need, it's us who need to rethink what we're doing here, more than, you know, can you do a bunch of reconstruction work on, on the physical location to, you know, make it qualify for the bistro ordinance? So, that's kind of my thought, thinking about this.
I raised my hand, I'll call myself. There are at least a couple of people who were around when the bistro ordinance was passed, when it was, I, I personally advocated for it. I can tell you that the initial thought was there are, all the restaurants are big, all the liquor licenses are costing $750,000 back in 2004, 2000, yeah, 2004, 2005, and we need some smaller restaurants. We saw it as an opportunity to activate the streets, but I think it has been presented in some quarters as if that was a, a primary reason for, for doing them. And from my perspective, it was not a primary reason, it was, wow, we can allow some smaller restaurants and get this great benefit of also activating the streetscape. And, you know, you had, after that, you had people who didn't have liquor wanting outdoor dining, and, and so it really evolved, and, and it was great. But I can tell you that the initial intent was, we just have these giant restaurants that are paying huge amounts of money for a liquor license, we don't have the kind of restaurants we as residents really want. And it was residents who put the pressure on the city commission, three different votes to get to the point where they would do this, and it was because we wanted smaller restaurants and more variety. It wasn't necessarily because we wanted outdoor dining, but we built it into it, and we haven't changed it since, it's served us pretty well, but if you want a cerveza with your taco, and if that's what we want, then we ought to talk about changing it, or coming up with something new to give us a little more discretion. Unfortunately, we're not there right now, so.
And that will not be a short process, because there'll be all sorts of commentary on it.
No, that could take a year.
Yeah.
Right?
It'll take longer. Well, how long did it take to do the initial bistro? That was years plural, wasn't it?
Um, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say so, and I was part of that, Mr. Marcus and Mr. Courier, and I sat down and basically wrote that ordinance. I would say, there, it was a lot of consternation building up to it, because all we were getting were these huge steak houses and big restaurants, and people complaining about the price of, of the liquor licenses and so on. To your point, there was only 17 quota, plus another five on top of that, and that's the reason it was created, as Mayor Baller has said. It was to encourage and allow smaller restaurants to be able to flourish and to be able to come in. When we created it, we set up and said, okay, well, if we're going to allow additional liquor licenses over and above the quota licenses to bring these restaurants in, what do we want? What do we as a city want? And we wanted activity on the street, we wanted storefront tables inside, we didn't want it to be a bar, we didn't want, you know, big entertainment or anything like that. So it was all part and parcel of creating the type of establishment that we wanted. I will say that outdoor dining was also in the original 2016 plan. It was suggested by Dwanee at the time, and I personally spent several years trying to get anybody to do outdoor dining in the early 2000s, and there, it just, it wasn't something.
Let's be honest, the outdoor dining was triggered by COVID, because it was the only way restaurants were surviving.
Oh, no, outdoor dining started way back in '06.
Yeah, but it really took off at that point, because that was when they could do business, because people were outside versus inside.
Dick O'Dows was the very first platform that we had, and that was in '06 or '07. And they were not a bistro at the time. But we were trying to activate the streets, but that wasn't too related to the bistro, that was just a whole different. By the time we got the bistro ordinance, we did have some outdoor dining, but not much that, that did help spur it on.
Well, if, if I may, then, real quick, we have here a small restaurant, right? And in some ways, in a sort of bizarre inversion, we're saying, well, actually, they're too small. Their storefront is so narrow that they can't put the requisite outdoor dining in front of it, so therefore, they can't qualify for the bistro ordinance, correct?
As written, that's right.
As written. So I feel like we have sort of undermined our own original purpose, if, if you are, what you're saying is the point was to encourage small restaurants.
And we can talk about that.
Yes, I understand that, that now, that is not that discussion that we're having, so.
So, is there a motion to move this forward?
I'll make a motion.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to take no action on the bistro application for Snap Taco at this time.
Second.
Second.
Hague, second. Yes, boss. Does this require a roll call?
Yeah.
Voice vote? All those in favor? Hold on, hold on, I'm sorry, any comment from the public, anywhere, online? Okay, we have a comment from the public. I think she's more than the public. Did they name it after you?
My name is Rosalba.
Oh, no.
Rosalba Montes, actually. I'm part of the, the business owner, and let me explain why this is my, my dream is right here, because when I was living in Traverse City for 15 years, all the people went, before visiting in my restaurant, they said, you should open in Birmingham, you should open a restaurant over there, we don't have nothing like that. And I'm, and all the time, because I'm walking, just passed away my little mini pomeranian, and I'm all the time walking in my area, I'm every single day walking in the streets, looking for my place, for my restaurant. And I tried, and he knows Nikki, Nick, when I tried in the Old Woodward by Deluxe, the side de Cafe Suco- when I tried in the Old Woodward, but by Deluxe, the side Cafe Suco. And they said, no, because I'm new in the area and all the, all the stuff. So finally, when I find out the, the, the other one, the, the little, the place, I, I was thinking for me, oh, maybe this is a good spot for not to take the boutique, the specialty, just take maybe the spot, the, the parking, the parking spot. Or, because I'm, I'm, I'm all the time, I'm creativit, como se dice, creativa? Creativit, or whatever. And I'm thinking, okay, maybe a garage door. Open a garage door in the front. Because I, I really like the people enjoy, like, not like the traditional tacos, like they think it's a traditional. No, I'm, I'm opening a cuisine, like, from my hometown, and with Platon also, he's my partner, and with Fusion, the most, the two, the most difficult cuisine in Mexico. I'm for Guanajuato, when it happened, the independence. And, and he's from Puebla, where is the best mole. But all the time is the people, unfortunately, the people like the margarita with the Mexican food, with a, and good Mexican food. It's because I'm trying. I need to explain you guys the, what is my idea, my intention. Actually, I say to my husband, I don't want to tell, because you know, the English is my second language. For me, it's difficult to explain myself. But I, I wish I can do more. But this is, this is the thing, when I really want to, the people enjoy a nice and fine cuisine, in Mexican cuisine, different, different the other ones. Listen, some point like for Birmingham is what I want to do. It's because I'm trying to, to open, I don't know, I can open a garage door and, and put like two different tables. I can, because we have, and you said for the, the other ones, the, I think so everyone is like a little baby, the, the restaurant. And for me, I, I wish you can see later my place, how is, how, what work we did. Beautiful, beautiful restaurant. And it's a new floor, new bench. We order exactly, try to decorate everything, because for the ambience, what I like to bring to Birmingham. And, and it's a, it's a beautiful spot. If you can check, and maybe I can, like you said, I can open the, the garage door and put like two tables, like a bistro, and be a bistro restaurant. Just, this is what I just, I'm, I'm telling them.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Now, you raise a good point, and I would, a question. You know, does, if they put in a garage door, how do we define outdoor dining? Does Dick O'Dowse, what they've done there, does that qualify as outdoor dining? Because it's sort of within their space? Does Zanna qualify? Would it theoretically? Neither one are bistros. But.
Well, they pulled the front wall back.
What is, what, what, what is, could that, this is a legal question. Could a garage door qualify as a, because it's only, we'd have to require that it be open the same period of time that we require outdoor dining, right? From like April, March, April to October?
April 15. And we don't require it the entire timeframe. Everybody always wants it the entire timeframe.
We don't require it the whole time.
We don't require it the entire timeframe.
So that, that's a legal question.
That's, that's a question that hasn't been asked or answered yet.
To be honest, I don't think it's a legal question. I think that the interpret, yes, I think this is a question of interpretation of the zoning ordinance for the BZA. Is the excessive, full accessibility bringing the air, making this outdoor dining? I don't, I think that's an interpretation question proper for the BZA.
For the BZA or for the building official first?
Well, it's two stages. First, it would go to the building official for an official interpretation. Generally, there would be a discussion between legal planning and building and coming up with that interpretation. And then if they wish to appeal it, they can appeal it to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay. Are you listening?
Kevin, a question.
Are you, are you listening?
Yes, I am.
Okay. What's your question?
You stated as on as a bistro license?
No.
No.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no.
So that question hasn't really been asked, and it, outdoor dining is not specifically defined in the zoning ordinance right now.
So if we deny it tonight?
That's my question.
With, without prejudice, what's the, without prejudice?
Can I ask that question?
Yeah.
So if, if, if we deny it tonight, can they, can they go back to the drawing board, so to speak, meet with the BZA, get an answer to that question, and come back this year? Or should we, if they're interested in doing that, table this and allow them an opportunity to go do that?
I, I would say you probably want to table it if you want to allow them to come back, because the way the ordinance is written, otherwise, they would have to wait until April.
Okay.
Which they could do, depending on what you want them to do.
Right.
But if you, but really, you only have twice a year to apply for these licenses, October and April.
April, okay.
Would you want to re-withdraw?
I, I would like to withdraw my motion, and if I may.
Somebody second it?
I do.
Commissioner Hague.
Are you okay with that?
I'm just looking at the legal definition of outdoor dining right now. And one of the things says that regulations often state that outdoor dining areas should not have fixed walls, but may include removable barriers, fencing, or overhead coverings like umbrellas or awnings. Public access, a crucial legal requirement, as the area must maintain a clear and obstructive path for pedestrian in emergency vehicles.
Is this Birmingham law?
No.
I'm just looking at just general legal definitions, so I can learn, because you're questioning, I want to figure it out.
Right now, we're discussing whether you're going to withdraw your second.
I know, and I'm trying to figure out whether I want to based off the definition of outdoor.
But I believe the motion was take no action. So if you're taking no action, you're not approving nor denying.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
So the motion was take no action.
So, and that's, that's equivalent to tabling?
I don't think it's equivalent to tabling. I think it's taking no action.
But it's not denying.
But it wouldn't preclude them from coming back.
Okay.
Before April?
Yeah, I, I don't know about that.
Yeah, I think you'd want to make another motion. Tonight?
Yeah, can they do that? Because it's to take no action.
Right now?
Right.
The tonight, taking no action is like taking no action.
And, and, and this all, you know, is the landlord going to allow them to change the front of the building to make it a garage door? Is that something?
Yes, we already had that laid out. We already talked to Nick, because we had to do a slump for that, because it is a historical building. But since the building has a new design, that was thought should not be an issue. We already reviewed that.
Okay.
As a thing that we want to do, but first was to get open. Second was to come here and do the slump for the bistro permit, and then the slump for the, the garage door.
Thank you. We could, if Commissioner Hague does not want to withdraw his second, we could vote on this one. And if we want to say no, and then we could have a second motion.
What's the alternative motion that you're proposing?
Tabling.
Tabling.
Which is the same as taking no action.
No.
No.
I don't understand the purpose of tabling. Tabling is.
They want to give them an opportunity to go find out this information and come back prior to April.
Without, yeah, without waiting for the next round.
And if that's, and if that's not a possibility, then it's, 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 there's no means to, there's no reason to do that. They could come back in April. I'm saying.
They can come back any time if we're not taking any action right now. That's my interpretation of taking no action tonight.
I, I think that's not really what I would interpret as the ordinance that we, or the resolution that the commission took years ago that said you can only come in October and April.
Right.
And you can only come in April if, if we didn't take all of them in October. So I think what you're asking is how to get them back before April.
Right.
I would suggest that your best bet, based on that prior resolution, would be to make a motion to let them come back in however long.
We still have a motion in second, so unless the second or wants to withdraw.
If, if that's how everybody wants to do it, I can withdraw.
I don't think.
So the motion and second have been withdrawn, and now do I have a proper motion, which should say explicitly they can come back, or just table it?
I don't think tabling is the way to go, personally. I, now I understand where you're trying to go. You could try postponing to a date certain and give that 60 days, two meetings, three meetings. If it has to be postponed again, you can do that. This, this is not like a public hearing where you have notice issues. So I think that's a better way to go.
Sure. If we gave you 60 days, would that be enough time?
Sure. I'd just like to understand what the expectation from your perspective is.
Our expectation is that you would go to the building official, who is charged with interpreting our zoning ordinance.
Okay.
And ask him whether a garage door qualifies as outdoor dining.
Okay.
Then, depending on what he says, if he says, yeah, sure, then you can come back to us. If he says no, if he says no, then you have the option of doing nothing, or you can go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. They are a quasi judicial board that meets here, and they will hear your case, and they will either grant you a variance or not.
Good. Thank you for your, I appreciate it.
It wouldn't be a variance. It'd be an interpretation of what outdoor is.
An appeal.
They could re, oh, they, I'm sorry.
It would be an appeal of the interpretation.
Keep in mind, BZA serves two functions.
Okay, got it.
One for variance, one for interpretation.
Okay. They rarely do the interpretation.
Rarely. It's not very common.
So.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your help. Birmingham going to be, going to have the best.
Go ahead. We just need to get this business.
I would like to make a motion to postpone the, the hearing on this particular issue until six, until the next meeting, that is 60 days from today's date.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you very much.
We got you a little bit of the way. Okay. We move on to customer service standards. A resolution to adopt the proposed customer service standards for this city. Assistant city managers.
She's up for it.
There we go. It's already in there. I trust that we have all read the report, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we've all read the report.
Okay.
Very good report.
Thank you.
Is there anything you'd like to add to the report?
I just want to make it clear that from researching customer service standards, that it's not widely used in Michigan yet. So we'd be kind of a leading edge amongst our neighbors. But it is pretty popular with municipalities in Canada, and there's a couple around the US who are doing it as well. The main idea is to get everyone on the same page. The commission, the public, the staff, all on the same page of what is expected of us as we interact with the public, as we do all day, every day. And I would probably identify two main themes. The first one being making sure that people feel respected and listened to, as the first theme of any of the examples that I read or provided. And then the second theme is the follow-up to that, response time. Like, give a clear standard for when you can expect to hear a call back. So what I had proposed in the draft is one day for phone calls or voicemails, and two days for electronic communications, with the acknowledgement that oftentimes people bring pretty complex issues to us, and that what we may be doing is making an initial touching base with a person to kind of flesh out what their concern is. Let them know that we're working on it. Tell them the steps that we're working on it, and that a longer answer may be provided later. If you choose to go in this direction, I would propose that, much like these posters, that our communications team would design, maybe not quite so large, but a simple one-page document that could be posted around city offices and city buildings. Again, if you see it, you know it, you do it. I'm a former middle school teacher, so that is kind of ingrained in me. And then also provide some customer service training for our staff. You know, I think most of our staff does a very good job all of the time, but it never hurts to do better.
Okay, thank you. I did raise this. So part of me wants to respond right away, but part of me, as mayor says, I need to hear from other commissioners. So, Commissioner Hoss.
You know, the joy of this is it's putting in writing that the people who live here are, are customers, and I thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, so Commissioner Hague, he was first.
So, I'll be quick. First of all, I think.
You've got to look left and right.
I think this is amazing, great work, really great work. I would just argue, even given the complexities that, that I understand what I'm about to say are, are difficult, I think we got to take the next leap. And what I mean by that is, when I buy a home, before I buy it, I want to know what's going to take. These seven steps to get my temporary or, or first round of approvals is going to be 14 days. And I know that goes with a whole bunch of complexities, but that depends on load, that depends on current capacity, depends on a whole bunch of things. But we used to shoot 6,000 television, television commercials a year. We had no idea when we were going to do them. Sometimes, sometimes we did 100, sometimes, sometimes we did 1,000. But we always knew, when they said, what's your turnaround time? We gave them a sheet, said, here it is. And there was staffing, and could we get certain actors or actresses? Could we afford the, the sponsor fee? So there's all sorts of variables. I would, even though I think this is amazing, I would push it harder into the probably more complex areas where people get a lot of, where residents get a lot of anxiety. And that is, I just spent $2 million on a home. I want to redo my bedroom, because my parents are sick and they got to move in. Didn't expect that, but I need to get it done, because otherwise, I'm going to have to find a, a home to put them in, versus building an extension on my house. But if I know 14 days to get a permit, I got 90 days till I have to find a place for them to live, I'm good. Birmingham's good for me. So that's, that would be my only comment on it, because I, I think it's great, a great first round, but I would just like to push it. Does that make sense?
Yep. Commissioner Hague?
So I get where he's coming from. I've got some reservations about it, because I know that, like you said, workload and other things going on. I'll leave that one there. This is good. One of the things I actually really like about this is it's on one page. The others were getting a bit prescriptive, and that was too much. So having it on one page really gets it to be very summarized. So this, yeah, I'm, if we literally did something like the board like that, and put it up in front of the desks, outside the desks, then I'm, for step one, this is fine. I'm, I, I will go for this. I'll support this as written right now.
Commissioner Hoss?
I think that this, to, to agree with Commissioner Hague, I think this is an excellent first step, step as a general customer service standard for the city as a whole. But I think it would be good to try to move forward on more department-specific service standards as the next step. So this would be the overarching service standard. But then, should there be one related to planning, or building, or engineering to answer those questions, which is frankly where we get a lot of complaints, and they're extraordinarily complicated? I think that, that those departments could be tasked with goals to develop service standards for their departments that are specific to their needs, moving forward as the next step. So related to permitting, or drainage, or, you know, renovations, whether it's commercial or residential. I don't think it's possible to have one service standard that's going to cover all that, because they're too different. But I think this is an excellent first step for a general service standard. And then again, we should ask individual departments to move forward and develop, you know, service standards for themselves.
He has a question. Commissioner Kozlowski?
Thank you. Yeah, I think, I think the document's great. Happy, happy to approve. I was just wondering, do we have, so when, you know, I worked in various software companies, and you were delivering software as a service, there's always sort of a ticketing system, where if something went wrong, what?
Sure.
Yeah, right, something, you know, whatever. There's a whole bunch of them out there. But the idea is that you have some piece of software, a tool, that would sort of track issues. So something, somebody would call and say, I have this problem. And somebody would open up a ticket, and they would assign that ticket to somebody. And maybe, yeah, the first step is, oh, we'll follow up within 24 hours for a call, and then I'm going to assign it to somebody in engineering. And now that person in engineering has this thing, and they've got some, you know, agreement for how long they have to update the ticket and reply, or defer, or move it to somebody else or something. And my, my main point is, as you said, our staff is great, and I want to make sure we are setting themself, them up for success, and that they have the tools they need to, to actually deliver this stuff. I don't want stuff slipping through the cracks, and then residents are annoyed, and, you know, you know, and like I said, I don't want to feel like we've set the staff up for failure, because we haven't given them the proper tools to meet these goals.
Do we have a ticketing system?
We do have a similar system.
We do have a similar system for some things, but it doesn't cover them all. For instance, GovPilot that we have. If somebody makes an online suggestion, or comment, or complaint, or, "Oh, there's a big pothole on my street", or whatever, there is a ticketing type of system for that, where it tracks it, and follows it, and closes it out. That's why we ask everybody to please send it through that process. But we don't have one for an individual call.
And by and large, we do not, I'm not saying this would be a good practice, but we don't like open up GovPilot tickets when somebody calls, right? We will not do that on behalf of a resident right now, or?
We don't, sometimes we do.
Sometimes we do, okay.
We shouldn't necessarily.
We shouldn't necessarily.
We have had instances where information got contained in the GovPilot concern that a staff person put in about the public. So...
It's public. You can go on the map and click on everyone.
So it's not necessarily.
It's not a ticketing.
Okay, so it's not exactly what I'm thinking of.
It's not exactly, but it kind of covers it, but only for people that put it in through that.
Okay.
But it is an interesting.
Why don't we just say, kind of, Bill used the name of the software. I remember looking at it years ago. I never ended up using it. But it's a Kanban process. JIRA, use that as an example to look at for the next, I mean, to Commissioner Long's point and to what I said. Step one, this is what we're talking about right now. I'm good with this as step one, and we can just add the point in there of, let's look at developing further as an example, a tool like JIRA. That's not what we're debating now. What we're debating is this. So let's keep it to this with maybe a modification to the motion, and then we can move on because this stands on its own two feet right now. So.
Okay. I have an observation. May I?
You're asking your thought.
Oh, I'm looking at her. She was. Because she can make them now.
Did you want to talk?
No, I didn't.
Okay. I think this is all about expectations, 100%. It's what the customer expects and what the service provider expects. And sometimes they don't expect the same thing. And if they don't clarify expectations at the point of contact, when they first... If I come in, and if I go to a restaurant, and they say it'll be 15 minutes, and it takes 10 minutes, I'm happy. If it takes 20 minutes, I'm mad. If I come into community development, and they don't tell me how long it'll take for a permit, or for whatever it is I need, then I'm going to assume whatever I assume, and I might not be smart enough to ask. So it's on us to set expectations and to live up to the expectations that we set. So I don't care. I mean, I do care how long it takes for a permit. But if one permit takes 10 days and another one takes six months, let's just be honest with them, tell them how long it takes, set the expectation, agree on that, and then each person can put it in their calendar so that they contact the other when the period is up. So it's all about expectations. And I would like to see a line in there that covers expectations, setting reasonable expectations and living up to them. That's very simple.
And documenting them.
And doc, yes. And document. Yep. In the absence of an elaborate software system, that seems to be a very simple matter. And it is, I think, I think a lot of our departments, Treasury, there's not a lot of follow-up. It's a transaction. Somebody comes in, correct? Clerk, there might be a few where they have to set. Community Development, huge, right? Everybody coming in to community development is not going to get, that day, what they came in for, most likely.
Can I ask a question?
So, you may.
So I just want to make sure that I understand what we're being asked to tonight because I agree, this is a great step one, phase one. But the suggested motion is that we adopt the resolution, adopting the proposed customer service standards that are before us. And I seem to think that there may be some of us that would want to make suggestions or modify, or what have you. Is that within the confines of an approval tonight?
Modify the motion.
I'm asking whether we need to modify the motion.
Commissioner Long.
I would, I'm happy personally to support this as is. And then under, you know, commissioner's suggestions for future agendas, bring up that the next step is that we would like to have them move forward.
Well, if you motion it, I'll second it because I'm fine with approving this with the proviso that we will then work on subsequent updates or revisions.
I've got my one line in there about setting expectations and following up. Then I'm happy.
And document.
And document.
I don't know how you operationalize setting expectations for those other departments in here because they're all going to be different.
Yeah, I could write the line, but I'm not going to. I know it can be done. A line that talks about setting expectations, following up, and documenting those expectations so that everybody's clear. I don't think that's a hard line to add.
So this relates to phone calls, emails, and GovPilot requests. It does not relate to any permitting activity or transactions.
I would put it up above in the customer service standards, in the general principles. Those response times, you know, those are, yeah, great. And there's so much more that goes on, and we can't cover every detail. So you put it in the bullet points above.
So what I'm hearing, I believe, is under the, there's four bullet points under customer service standards. Then there's the fifth, follow-up internally and externally to encourage, or to ensure that issues are resolved. What if we put a bullet point in between bullet point four and five that says, "Let the customer, let the resident know how long you think it will take to get back to them"? Is that what you're asking for?
Yeah, pretty much.
And then leave in the bullet follow-up to make sure that it... So you're saying you want to provide an expectation of how long it will take? Because I'll tell you.
Set and document expectations. That's pretty much all you need, those four.
No, 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 no.
And document expectations.
Set, provide an estimate.
An estimate, and that's all you can do.
If we say the expectation is three minutes, and it's five minutes, the expectation's failed, set an estimate of the estimated turnaround.
Yeah.
Because it will, it will change depending on workload, depending on complexity. Because for instance, if...
Part of the expectation is that it's an approximation.
An estimate of the timeframe that it'll be to get back to you, or resolve an issue, or whatever. Because it depends. We get all kinds of calls.
All kinds.
Right.
And can't be...
And sometimes it's the fault of the customer. If the city says, "I can't approve this till you provide that", and they never provide it, which happens.
A little clarity because it could be a very confused request.
One of the expectations is, you need to provide this by next week. And then we set another expectation after that.
How about, may I?
Yes.
How about set an estimate for an estimated turnaround time, communicate it, and document it?
Provide.
Provide an estimate, provide and document an estimated turnaround for the request, for the specific request.
To be addressed.
Yeah, I'd make it to the specific request because you've got question A, I've got question B, similar themes, I've got a lavery-sized project, you're putting an extension back for your house. It's not the same.
No, I understand that that's why we're doing it.
Something like that. An estimate of the anticipated turnaround, or response turnaround time.
Who's making the motion? Did somebody make it?
She and I were perfectly happy to go ahead with it.
Well, are we fine with that language? Because then the next step would be to do...
I like, "Set and document expectations." Boom, period. The expectation can be about anything. Just set the expectations. It doesn't have to be complicated.
What's your proposed wording, Therese?
That might be a little vague.
Well, it's intentionally a little vague. Did you set the expectation?
I was going to say, provide the community member, following that language, with an estimated turnaround time for their request to be addressed.
That's fine by me.
Works on me.
This is the first step. It's a great first step.
So I think there was a motion.
If you want a motion with that, I'll second it.
We have, I don't know.
No, we didn't.
No, I don't think so.
I don't think there was a motion.
There was no motion.
Can I make a motion?
I heard a rumor that there was going to be.
You don't need permission to make a motion.
Well, I shouldn't believe all the rumors.
But you asked the chair to be recognized to make the motion.
I recognize the gentleman to my left.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion, adopting a resolution to adopt the proposed customer service standards for the city subject to the addition of bullet point number?
New number five.
New number five.
Which would state, provide the community member with the estimated turnaround time for their request.
To be addressed.
To be addressed.
Therese drafted the proposal, and I think you should second that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Moving right along. Commission items for future discussion. A motion is required to bring up the item for future discussion. At the next reasonable agenda, no discussion on the topic will happen tonight.
Are we going to bring up the use of software ticketing systems here, or?
I don't.
Is that, was that sort of implied in our discussion, or?
They're the administration. It's their job to...
Yeah, they should review it and come back to us with ideas rather than us try to push that particular one.
Excellent. Thank you.
Commissioner Hogue, host had his hand raised.
Commissioner Hogue.
You know, my three questions to Jana when Fred Lavery were here. I'm in shock at the answers. So my proposition or proposal is, on all future construction projects, the commission should consider making the commercial owner pay for using our streets and our parking spaces during construction.
So the, okay, the item for future discussion is that we should make them pay, or?
Or consider making them pay.
Okay. So that's fair.
I can second that because I've already brought up, and the city manager's brought up, about the use of parking spots, certainly metered parking spots, where we're receiving new revenue right now. But that's something I've made a point about, and I think blocking off streets for years on end.
Okay, we're not talking about it tonight.
It makes it a supportable motion, yes.
You seconded it. And can I just ask, the city manager thinks this is a reasonable thing for us to review?
Yes. Certainly with regards to the parking spaces, which are already monetized.
All those in favor of moving this to step two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Anything else? I have two things, and for some reason I can't even think of the second. Does anyone else have anything before I bring out mine? Okay. I think, I think we made some, we took a good step in setting a workshop for before tonight's meeting, except we didn't have a workshop before tonight's meeting. So our intent is good. We're trying, I think, before next year, we should talk about some possible changes to the process we use for selecting the mayor so that the community feels like we've not done anything wrong, done anything in secret, and that we actually have a process because it's not always going to be as cut and dry. And I will say to Mr. Bloom, if he's listening, that there was nothing behind the scenes this go-round. It was, I deliberately, like, didn't, it just worked out this way because of the people and because of how it worked. So, but, and I won't get into it. I have a list of things that I think we should do. But I think sometime before next November, probably before next September, we should talk about a few minor things that we can do that will enhance our process for selecting the next mayor, Mayor Protem. So with that, I'll make that motion. Second. All those in favor?
Can I? I was going to ask for a clarification. What, so we're just, to discuss the process for selecting the mayor is effectively?
Yes.
The conversation is...
Yes, further discussion. Okay, great, passes. And since I can't remember what the other thing was.
I have a motion second. I didn't get the full vote.
It was unanimous. Anything else? Obviously, it wasn't that urgent, so it can wait. So we will then move on. Commission, discussion on items from a prior meeting, there are none. We have, we need a resolution. I'm not even going to read it. I'll allow someone to make it, and they can read it.
I am going to ask that we bifurcate it because I do believe that one of the commissioners will need to recuse themselves on the second purpose for our closed session under 81D. So if we could do the resolution to meet in closed session regarding pending litigation as one motion first, please?
I'll make a motion as stated for that item.
I think with this one, you have to read it, correct?
The record has to be clear of why we're going in.
Okay. Hang on a minute. All right. All right, hang on. So make a motion to meet in closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268, section A, parentheses, one, parentheses, E of the Overmeetings Act, to discuss pending litigation entitled Yasmina ZXL versus City of Birmingham, Oakland County Circuit Case Number 2024-206496-NZ. Honorable Philisi McMillan and Sec... Sorry.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Anthony Law.
Yes.
Mayor Ballard.
Yes.
Commissioner Cold.
Yes.
Commissioner Kozowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Hogue.
Yes.
Commissioner Therese Long.
Yes.
Commissioner Hague.
Yes.
All right, and then I'd like to make a motion to meet in closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268, section 81D, to consider the purchase or lease of real property up to the time an option to purchase or lease that real property is obtained.
So this is the one where I will recuse myself for the potential of a conflict. So I'll leave now.
Well, you don't have to leave now.
No, no.
I'll vote for the vote.
There's no discussion.
Okay, you can be there, but no vote.
Okay, did we have a second?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kozowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Cold.
Yes.
Commissioner Therese Long.
Yes.
Commissioner Hague is recused. Mayor Protem Anthony Law.
Yes.
Mayor Ballard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hogue.
Yes. Okay, we're going to do that at the end of the meeting, right?
At that pleasure.
Yeah, I think that's, well...
There is, you do have an attorney here, Michael Hatchett, who's here being paid by the hour.
Okay. We have removed from the consent agenda, we have communications. Maybe, we can come back. There's nothing here, as long as our parking czar doesn't mind sitting around. Okay. Then we should go into closed session. And the Zoom can go on.
Recession.
Recession.
Recession. Thank you. Hit the hammer.
I give you that for no reason.
Thanks for being the ref there.
Commissioner Kozowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Cole.
Yes.
Commissioner Therese Long.
Yes. Mayor Protem Anthony Long.
Yes.
Mayor Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Hofs.
Yes.
Mr. Hay.
Yes.
Reports. Commissioner reports. We have a notice of intention to appoint to the Board of Review. Commissioner comments.
I just have one brief one.
Commissioner Long. Mayor Protem Long.
So, as each of us received invitation to the VIP party for RH in our... You should have received it. If you didn't look in your spam, it came to your Commissioner email. I'm mentioning that now for the two new commissioners because you may not have access to your email yet. But that is on the 19th of November. And then also, there is going to be a ribbon cutting on November 21st at 11:00 a.m. That they'd like to ask all the commissioners to consider attending, including the mayor, whoever that was going to be. And that's at 11:00 a.m. on the 21st.
No, I will not be here. So, Mayor Protem will have to sit in my place.
So be it. I will attend. But I just wanted to give everybody a heads up. You'll be getting emails, I'm assuming, on it.
Right.
If you haven't already. But I wanted to let you all know. That was it.
Don't be that. Any other comments? Okay. Advisory boards, committees, commissions, reports, and agendas. We have none legislation. We have none city staff. We have a report on the evening monthly parking permit program. That's illiterate. Aaron?
Do you have questions?
Well. Manu.
Calm down.
We have your report. You've waited all this time.
I mean, it was a staff report, so...
I hope somebody has questions. This was... You provided this report in response to...
There was a...
Which Commissioner?
That would be me.
Oh.
Yes.
You were even named in the report.
I was. Correct.
Yeah. Maybe you have some.
I just want to thank the staff and the parking... They're looking into this. So, the concept for those who are new is that we have lots of staff, bartenders, waitresses, waiters, busboys, who come into the city that don't live here, that have to park. And some of them have commented, well, I'm already $10, $12 down a night before I even start working. You know, they make minimum wage. What I was not aware of, and what I'm now aware of, is that we have a program, an evening monthly parking permit program that allows for a $20 per month reduction for use between 4:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m. And there's currently 73 users of the program, which is excellent. I don't know if you know, but like when you go to places like Vail, Colorado, it's very expensive places. It's hard to get people that work in the restaurants there when they can't afford to live there and/or travel there. And so, I viewed it as, you know, we want to support our businesses, and this does that. There is a mention in the report about potentially moving up the time to 2:00 p.m. rather than 4:00 p.m. Because I think that certain of those people come in early to set up. And I'd be in favor of whether that has to come to the commission or whatever at a later date. But I just want to commend the city for already having in place what I had envisioned, which is excellent. And maybe upping the time. I don't know if we need to do that, or whether that's something the staff and the city could do without our thought on that.
Commissioner Long.
Or is that something we should ask the advisory parking committee to study? Moving the time up to 2:00 p.m. and reducing the fee? And, you know, if... Do we have the bandwidth to even issue any more of these evening passes? Or perhaps to restrict them to like Chester Deck only? Or, you know, some recommendation that we can actually implement?
Yeah. So, this is... Obviously, this program has been in place for quite some time. From what I gather, I tried doing some research back, even back with SP Plus in their earlier days. It sounds like this plan was in place in the early 2000s. But there hasn't been a lot of movement with it. And I think to the points that are being made right here, I think it's twofold. It's probably the hours operation. So, you made a point, right now it's 4:00 p.m. A lot of staff that are working night, you made the point earlier, maybe they come in at 3:00 o'clock. Maybe they come in at 2:00 to get their prep work. So, that 4:00 window might be just too late. So, we're missing some of those people. And additionally, we're offering a discount. But maybe that discount is not a big enough discount for people that, again, are making hourly wage. Maybe, you know, most of their salary is dependent on tips. So, I think to Commissioner Long's point, we started working with the BSD. Erica with the BSD directors already sent out some emails to a lot of the restaurants in the neighborhood. We're getting a lot of feedback. So, asking questions like, are you aware of this program? If you are aware of this program, why does it not work for you? If... Is it the 4:00 start time? If it was a 3:00 start time? Or what start time would maybe be more beneficial to your evening staff workers? And obviously, the rate... You know, obviously, if you're going to ask anybody what would be a preferred rate, they're always going to say cheaper. But I think recognizing that maybe a $20 discount is maybe not ideal because it's 20... Right now, it's $20 across the board. So, at the Pierce Garage, which is $100, $20 discount's 80. Well, all right, the Chester Deck is 70 regular. All right, $50 discount might be a little bit more... You know, you could... You know, you could sandwich that a little bit more. But, you know, I think maybe if we looked at more of a percentage rather than a flat $20 rate. But again, we're asking the BSD for input from all the various restaurants since they have those relationships. And to your point, Commissioner Long, we were going to bring some of these recommendations to the APC at a future meeting, ask for their input and guidance, and then obviously, hopefully, based off their recommendations, bring it back to you with hopefully some action items.
One more suggestion, and I know it's late, and then we can go. Maybe they should think about making them park at the top of the structure where people don't park as much, rather than intermixing with, say, people that are coming and going and actually are patrons to the restaurant or what have you. And that's kind of like the trade-off for giving maybe a little bigger discount. But they're up at the top where you might find any given night that they otherwise, rather than taking spots down below.
Or the very bottom of Chester.
Or the very bottom. Yeah. Yeah. All right. And thank you very much for looking into that.
And thanks for staying, Aaron. Appreciate it. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
You've got to work on that. Adjourn.